We'll call the meeting to order. Form A applications.
Chairman, 75 Dale Street, they, late in the day, requested an extension.
On behalf of the applicant, we hereby further extend by 35 days the board's requirement to endorse the A and R plan for the above referenced parcel. The extension is from the date of this letter and is intended to allow review and approval of a notice of intent and conditions, condition, continuation of the public meeting that occurred on July 12, 2021, October 4, 2021, to the meeting of April 4, 2022. This extension expires April 8, 2022. If you have any further questions, please do not hesitate to call. The only, when's our next meeting?
April 4.
April 4, okay. So that just gives us four days if for some reason we didn't cancel the meeting.
He's been pretty good about staying in touch with us and you could always just deny it at the April 4 meeting if he doesn't request it.
Okay, all right, fine, so, motions?
Motion.
Made, seconded. Second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Some move. So any Board of Appeals agenda? Anything on that? Nothing on that. Request for bond reduction, Century Estates, Richard Rosen. You have something to report on that, Dave?
I don't know much.
On the Rosen, on the Century Estates?
Yeah, I reviewed both the street acceptance plan and the Asbilly plan. And I think in my letter to the board, the street acceptance plan is acceptable for moving forward with the acceptance of their street as a public way. I reviewed the Asbilly plan and that is also found to be acceptable. There are a number of labeling issues that I'll work, work out with the design engineer when the plan's complete. So those two things are.
And what do we have, the bond down to?
Um, he's asking.
Twenty-five.
For a reduction to 166,000. We're still holding like 300,000, right?
One sixty-six.
That's all we're holding right now?
Sean Riley, one, five and Washington Street, representing Danica Development. Here for two reasons, for Century Estates. One is for the, the board's vote to recommend to the Board of Selectmen to take the last formal vote to lay out the road and send it to town meeting, based on Dave's review. The second part was to request the reduction of the bond. The bond was last reduced back in November of 2020, I believe it was, and it's at $166,000. We haven't bothered to ask for any sort of reductions since then. If you recall, we were, wanted to kind of wait till everything was finished and get things done. As Dave said, there's a couple little details and I submitted a letter in January with a copy of the November bond estimate with some little note saying, this is done, this is done, this is done. One of the things that's not done is we have to replace a tree that died at the beginning of this winter. We'll take care of that. The board's policy in the past has always been to not lower it lower than 25,000, which we're fine with, and that would be released after town meeting and then town council approves all the documents, everything gets recorded and buttoned up. So we're requesting that go from 166 to 25.
Thank you. Any discuss, uh, motion to reduce it to 25,000? Make the motion first and then we'll discuss it.
Okay.
Motion?
Second.
Second.
You agreed with their listing of?
No, I, it's not that I disagree. I haven't had with the, with the weather been able to confirm all of the items on the, the list, so I think my recommendation would be to hold on to the bond reduction till, till the next meeting so that I can go out and. Some of the items, Sean, if you want to go through, which are, which are non-construction related.
Right.
We can, but with the snow and so forth, I haven't been able to get out to.
Dave has been on site at least three different times over the last year or so with the road develop, the road contractor, SLT. And like some of the things that Dave's mentioning is like there was a grate missing on one of the ellot structures, which is out behind a house through the trees in the ellot structure and was covered with snow until yesterday. So we're take, tackling it two ways. I'm trying to get a written memo from the roadway contractor to say, yes, all that stuff is done that was on the punch list that they created in, well, I know you were there in June and then you were there after June. So those, you know, roadway's done, sidewalks done, guardrails done, street trees, except for one are done. Everything's done. The items that we're talking about are little, literally de minimis, less than $5,000 worth of, you know, trash grates. I, I don't know if there's anything else on the list that's.
Um, we have a copy of the list.
Just.
In the meantime, if anybody's here tonight for the proposed zoning changes, the updated copies are over in that chair.
Kind of say if it.
With town councils.
If Dave hasn't had time, if they haven't had time to go look at it.
Well, I can tell you like, um, the items that were on the list back in November 2020, head wall rip rap for $2,500, trash racks at the, at the head walls, 1,000, yeah, $1,000. Galvanized steel grates on the control, 1,000.
I've, I've got the list.
Those trees should be retained.
Yeah, so street lights, they're in, ADA ramps, they're in, planting strips are in, street trees are in, with the exception of the one, which is $600. Stop signs in, survey and engineering's done, roadway and easement markers are done, lot markers are done, detention area repair and maintenance, it's been done, cleanup and flush drains, I'm told it's done, I didn't see it done, but again, that's what I'm waiting for, a signature. Asbilly survey and plan, as you know, is done, and then you would typically hold a couple thousand dollars just for remaining plowing for this winter, because this is unscheduled to be approved in April. So the 25,000 would cover all of the items that, you know, we're talking about right now, but if, for whatever reason, you need to postpone this another month, okay, but I think my client would rather and prefer that it would be reduced to the 25 so we can pay his contractors. And I think 25,000 is more than ample to cover the confirmation that the track, the trash rack and the grate is installed out in the retention pond.
I agree with that, based upon the last bond estimate. You know, I have confirmed that the street lights are in, ADA ramps are in, planting strips, street trees are in, surveying and engineering is done with the Asbilly plan and the street acceptance plan. There may be some detention area repair, but that would certainly come under the 25,000.
Dave, um, have you had a chance to check out the road surface curving? All that stuff is okay?
We did not do any of the original inspections on the drainage, the subways. We were on site for the finished coat of pavement. We've inspected multiple times the granite curbing and the sidewalks and the final pavement, yes, absolutely.
I mean, that's would be my bigger concern is road surface curbing, some of the bigger features.
On the motion to this, do we want to continue with the 25,000 or do you want to make it a little bit higher or what's your pleasure? We have a motion on the floor to approve with the, to release the down to 25,000. If that's okay, we can, we can vote on that if someone wants to make that higher. Comfortable with that, Dave?
Yeah, yes.
On the motion, all those in favor, the 25,000, down, reduction down to 25,000, say aye. Aye, some move.
Can we do a recommendation?
Please?
The recommendation?
Yeah, on the, uh, recommendation to the Board of Selectmen on the acceptance of the roadway layout for Century Estates, and that's the three roads. And Dave, what do you have? Any, you agreed to that, it's okay, right?
The acceptance plan?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
They were not required to pave all of Cynthia Road, correct?
Correct.
I'm also asking our board, just to make sure that was, they weren't required. It was a hundred, last hundred yards of it, it's pretty chewed up, but I want to make sure that wasn't their responsibility.
Oh, that's on the other, other, right, that's, that's another subdivision, right, or existing, right? And quite frankly, that road was in disrepair even before this project started.
Yeah, just want to make sure.
Yeah, if you, if you recall, we actually did do 300 extra feet on Dorsey Street.
Yeah.
That was town property as part of the update of the plans. If you recall, Jim Karfis actually had this approved back in 2007.
Yeah.
And then we, Mr. Rosen picked up after his, after Mr. Karfis' death.
Have we heard from DPW if they're okay with all that's there?
We have not, I sent them. The Asbilly plans announced some to provide feedback if they have any.
Okay, well, we didn't hear back from them?
I didn't hear back from them.
Okay.
Any comments on the floor? Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion, you know, noting that our consultant had said that he's okay with the accepting the street layout.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Thank you.
And, why don't we just do this one more and then we'll get to the public hearing.
I'm sorry, could you grab that back from Dave for me?
Would you?
No, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
No, that's, that's fine. This is it. This is the chief's.
A vote to sign plans and covenant for definitive subdivision, Roslin Street.
Sean, I have a question. I don't think you need me to say anything, so I won't. I think Dave can report.
Dave?
Yep, um, we've reviewed the revised plans, we've reviewed the covenant. I made a couple of comments to both Sean and to the engineer, which were resolved. So we're recommending that the board can sign the plan and the covenant.
I will speak just to review, sorry. This, if you recall, this was a two-lot subdivision that was approved in December, I believe, and the approval was subject to just filing the final draft of the plans with some additional tweaks and notice, notes that were included in Norman Engineering's letter. So that updated final plan was submitted dated February 8th, and that's what Dave has reviewed and approved, and that's what would be endorsed by this board. Upon your endorsement, I would take that mile hour, that original plan, and record it at the registry deeds with the covenant.
And the bond is being reduced from $166,000 to 25,000?
No, that's a.
No, that was Century Estates.
We just finished that.
Oh.
So, it says February, do you mind if I just cross out February?
What says February?
And Port March, the covenant.
The covenant is dated, I, I have the original right here, listen, the.
Okay.
The February is the date of the revision of the plan.
Okay.
I already, the, the board doesn't have to sign it, the owner of the property has to.
Has already done that.
But I submitted a copy of the sign, which you're looking at to show that it has been done and signed.
Well, yeah.
So on the definitive subdivision, road improvement, Roslin Street. What's your pleasure?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made. Seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll grab the, into us plan, either later tonight or tomorrow, whatever works. Thanks.
In 6:05, public hearing, special permit and site plan review, marijuana retail application, 678 Adams Street, continued.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Abington Planning Board, my name is Michael Nashwadi. I'm here on a follow-up site plan review hearing. Just to recap, we're, we're asking for a few waivers and one extension. The waivers relate to the charity bond amount, the stormwater calculations, and the extension would relate to the zoning regulation requiring paved lots for retail uses.
We, we do have, we do have a couple of letters, one from the.
There's one from the fire chief?
This is, yeah, there it is.
I got his first.
From, from the fire chief that he would not be able to attend the meeting tonight. However, it is the fire department's strong recommendation that the property be fully paved as a condition of allowing this proposed project to proceed. The reason for this, from the fire department, which normally is not concerned with pavement beyond providing a strong base to support heavy fire apparatus, is due to the need for clearly marked and maintained fire lanes between the parking, parked customers and employee vehicles. The original email has the engineered fire access plan, which is tight on a good day, and assuming all vehicles are parked in neat, tightly fitted spaces. If this property is not paved and they are allowed to continuously paint the parking spaces, no parking lanes, et cetera, onto the gravel, as has been suggested by the owner at our meeting, it is obvious that the engineered fire apparatus access plan will simply not apply. At that point, I have serious concerns, the fire apparatus will have difficulty or no chance of maneuvering through the property as needed in the event of an emergency. We have received the appropriate fire alarm and other related documents to move forward, which would otherwise satisfy the requirements of the Abington Fire Department, as well as working with the owner of appropriate emergency response procedure and other areas of public safety if this proposed project is approved. And we also have another letter from the building department that required asphalt.
Okay, um, so based on my understanding, there was two letters, one from Fire Chief Nudel, one from the zoning and building department, and then there were concerns that the board had following our prior February hearing. I'd like to respond to all three of those.
Sure.
Prior to the board making its determination. I can start with the fire chief's letter if the board prefers, or I can start with last month's hearing notes I had and how we've addressed those.
We can have you, please.
Okay, I'll start with last month's hearing. So following the planning board hearing, a main concern of the board was areas of egress where the cars would have two tires on gravel and two tires on pavement. In response to that, oh, and also the adequacy of parking for the warehouse use separate from the retail use, if we decide to go down that road, which we plan on. So areas of egress, the response would be that we have, Austin, you might help me here? Austin is the engineer on the show, he's just going to flip to the applicable plan. Great, so in response, we've addressed the concern of the two tires on gravel, two tires on pavement, by proposing to remove this pavement located here per the plan. Pavement around the carriage of the building is still going to be either repaired, replaced, or refurbished, but this shaded area here, existing pavement, that is going to be removed so that the entirety of the customer experience parking in the gravel lot will be based on gravel, a gravel way. The handicap accessible spots are going to be located on pavement. There'll be access from the handicap accessible spots to the handicap ramp, and that'll all be on pavement. And third, I've, I've handed each member of the board a, a small little packet. It has on the first page, the, the vehicle turning movement plan that was addressed by the fire chief. The second page has the extended parking capability plan. And the third and fourth page are the most recent site plan, which has been modified based on our discussions with the fire chief and the zoning department last week. The final two pages are the prior site plan that was submitted to the planning board. I submitted the prior so that we can show you a little shift in the center island to address some of the fire chief's concerns, as well as the inclusion of a fire lane, dedicated paved fire lane directly in front of the store off the farmer's porch. So that's just a recap on what I've handed you today. Following the planning board hearing, there was the issue of the, the two wheels, which we've addressed, hopefully to the board's satisfaction, with the proposed removal of unnecessary pavement. The handicap accessible spots will all be located on pavement, and the parking compliance sketch I passed out today shows significant parking capacity for the warehouse use located behind the warehouse, and that would not overlap with any of the retail parking spaces. Those were the concerns that I left last month's hearing focused on. Last week, after a meeting with members of the Abington, various Abington departments, there were some other concerns raised, which were further explained in the two letters you received today. We've taken very real steps to address those concerns prior to this meeting. Breaking down the fire department's letter of concern, the first stated concern relates to the need for clearly marked and maintained fire lanes. He says, quote, "It is the fire department's strong recommendation that the property be fully paved due to the need for clearly marked and maintained fire lanes between parked customer and employee vehicles." In response to that, we have amended our site plan showing site-specific signage detail, no parking fire lane. That's located on the second page of the site plan. Those signs will be posted clearly on each side of the farmer's porch. That one sign here, so we'll have one sign here, one sign here saying no parking fire lane. This entire area here is going to be an emergency lane for, for fire, fire vehicles leaving the shop. They'll have their own egress out of the facility from that fire lane, separate from the remaining customers.
Mike, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yeah.
The plans that you hinted out today, there's a shaded, checked, houndstooth's.
Yes.
Area, what, is that supposed to be gravel or is that?
That's existing pavement, that's going to be removed to be gravelled with the rest of the lot going forward.
Okay.
So that's the outline of the existing paved lot. I apologize if you weren't provided these plans in advance, but they should have been.
Just, just wanted to make sure I was understanding.
Yeah, so this, this shaded area is existing ground, uh, existing pavement that we plan on removing to make it one clean gravel lot for all the vehicles, so there won't be any two, two tires on pavement, two tires on gravel. The emergency vehicle lane will be completely. Paved in front of the shop, in addition to the two fire, the two no, no parking fire lane signs. The fire lanes will be under constant surveillance and any potential hazards will be addressed immediately as far as cars parking or idling in that area. Additionally, because the fire chief stated concerns about the potential for emergency vehicles to face difficult maneuvering through the parking lot, the entirety of the central island has been shifted away from the front of the retail store to allow for this dedicated fire parking lane here. It's been moved over.
How far was it moved over, Austin?
It'll be like five feet.
So we shifted the center parking part here about five feet to the right, closer to the warehouse. That gives more than enough space on both sides and underneath here for, for vehicles to maneuver in and out of the, you know, the difficult, difficulty maneuvering, the parking lot should be addressed by that. This, the, as such, the submitted fire apparatus plan will always remain applicable in the event of any emergency at this shop. The third con stated, stated concern he had was that, quote, "The original email has engineered fire access plan, which is tight on a good day, and assuming all vehicles are parked neat, tightly fitting spaces. If this property is not paved, they allow to continuously paint the parking spaces, no parking lanes, et cetera, onto the gravel, has been suggested by the owner at our meeting, it is obvious that the engineered fire apparatus access plan will simply not apply." The chief then goes on to state his concerns that the fire apparatus plan will have difficulty or, the fire apparatus will have difficulty or no chance of maneuvering through the property as needed in the event of the emergency. In response to this statement by the fire chief, we amended the site plan to a second revised version, allowing sufficient space for vehicle parking, ingress, egress of pedestrians for vehicles, and ease of access of emergency vehicles to fire lanes. All 22 of the proposed gravel parking spaces are clearly delineated by reference to the central island and by reference to wheel stops and curbs located at the hedge of each of the 20, the head of each of the 22 parking spots. There are fixed land, these are fixed landmarks that will not shift over the course of the year, less than a year that we plan to have a gravel lot on this spot. They'll be fixed in position, and the proposed site plan wheel stop detail shows how the wheel stops have associated anchors with them that anchor into the ground so that they don't shift and move around the lot as time passes. Our lines will be painted as regularly as the planning board and the town of Abington requires, but we anticipate painting our 22 gravel spots once every week, or more commonly as needed for rain or other storms. The location, the size, the scope of each of the 22 proposed gravel spots will not undergo shifting throughout the year, as the fixed, what I just said about the fixed curve, anchors, anchoring each spot, and those wheel stops are going to dictate how the lines are painted and repainted each time, so there'll be no shifting or movement of the fire apparatus plan, the lot layout in general, I believe. You know, a concern is just the, the fixed nature of a paved parking lot lines as opposed to a gravel lot where we'll have the responsibility to repaint. We just want the board to, to know that there, there will be no shifting of that central island or those curb stops, and that's directly what we're going to be using to, to dictate the future lines.
Mike, I don't want to throw you off.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I have a, I just went through some responses, so feel free to ask away.
Here's what's jumping out at me. So our requirement according to the bylaws for 30 spaces, correct? That's my understanding, I think it's noted here. Based on the square footage and everything else, you need to have 30 spaces.
I don't believe that's, that wasn't a, I wasn't aware. I think six were the required, based on the square footage of the shop.
Okay, so you have 30 though on the planned out.
Yes, yes, 30 spots.
You know, based on your, what I've seen with your, the shop in town that's already open, even on the busiest nights, I've never seen more than five cars.
Yeah.
Maybe six. So I'm wondering, if you don't need that many spaces right now, does that help you figure this out?
I don't believe so.
If we say you only need 12 or 13, does that make it easier?
I believe the concern for the fire apparatus plan, Austin might be able to help me out, is mostly the, the fact of cars pulling in of, out of the spots and into the spots, but more along not parking directly in the center of spots and the parking lots get shifted over time.
Yeah.
That makes it so that an emergency vehicle would not be able to enter in the case of an emergency. The spots, the way they're laid out, you know, I mean, we'll do whatever the board requires as far as parking spots, but we believe this needs more than enough space for the proposed 22 spots in the gravel lot for emergency vehicles to maneuver in and out of the lot, based on the.
I mean, my thought is that if, you know, right now you have that, those, those 22 spots kind of in the middle there.
Yeah.
If we said, you know what, we think that in the first year, 18 months, they are open, you can get away with, you know, a 10, 11, plus the couple others you have around the building, and you only have to pave that smaller section. Like, does that, does that change the calculus?
It's, uh, yeah, it, it's something that we could, we could do.
I mean, that way you're not paving the whole thing. I mean, that way you're not paving the whole thing, but you're at least, the spots where people would be parking are paved and marked. And the rest of it is, it'll stay as it is until you're ready to do the expansion. Again, I'm sorry for jumping ahead.
No, I understand what you're proposing. How that would work in practice, I'm not really sure where we would draw the line for paving or not. But the idea would be to ultimately, we want to do the lot all at once. We want to do the rear lot and the front lot and the stormwater chambers and all of that, all at once. It's an expensive enough endeavor to do all at once. Breaking it into two parts would be, you know, even more costly and expensive. We want to try to be opened in a timeframe that would allow us to sort of get some sales under our belt and then, and then take on the paving aspect of this, this project. I understand the fire chief has concerns and the zoning and building department have concerns. We feel like we've addressed those concerns to the point where vehicles can maneuver in and out.
Did he respond to your, his latest, you know, shifting the island over? Is his comments prior to the island shifting over?
Yes, yes. So we submitted a site plan that he commented on. And this parking strip, the center island was shifted to the right, closer to the building, where I thought, based on the wording in his letter, he was going to see some issues with cars not fully pulled into the parking spots or something like that. The back end hanging out of the spot or something along those lines and.
Honestly, I was trying to figure that out because when he said fire lanes, I wasn't thinking of your building at all because you can get around to all sides of your building. I thought he was talking about the factory building, blocking, interrupting lanes right in front of the building.
So that's not my understanding. We did, Austin.
Yeah, sure.
Austin Chardia with McKenzie Engineering.
That's Austin's email to the chief, and then that's the chief's response that we got today. So he sent the revised plans to the chief Thursday, and then the chief responded for the board's meeting tonight.
Right, so I guess just my, my two senses, the main concern that he raised was the pavement. And the applicant is basically asking for a continuance of that down the line to a date to be decided on. He's not, the plan is to pave it, and they're open to a condition, basically, that they pave it before next winter or within a year or something like that. Whereas the questions about the parking lot not being paved with the, you know, the spaces and cars being parked wherever, I don't think they would apply necessarily if the site's paved because then you'd have striped spaces. And to that point, we're providing an excess aisle widths and parking spaces. We're providing 10 by 20 spaces. 10 by 18 is all that's required under the bylaw. So I disagree that it's a tight site. But there's, we ran the models and there's plenty of space for even the ladder truck to maneuver to the rear of the site and the front of the site. So I guess that's just, I think the real concern was with the paving, which they do plan to do.
There was some discussion about these two spots here potentially interfering with any sort of egress and aggressive emergency vehicles. One, we paved the lot. We plan on moving those two sites, whilst we're actually launching the warehouse, just to create an easier access road to the, to the rear of the site. But right now, just looking at the front of the site, we think there's plenty of access for emergency vehicles to get in and out. And based on the signage requirements, the dedicated paved fire lane right up front of the building, and other steps we've taken, I apologize, the letter from the chief was submitted after our meeting, after submitting the revised plans. But we have oral comments from the chief that we made these changes to.
The chief, you sent the plans to me and the chief on Thursday.
Right, yes.
And his emails today.
Yes, so we had.
So he hasn't, I mean, I don't think you've given him another set of plans, right? I just don't want to have missed a set of plans.
These plans were amended based on the comments or we made at the meeting.
Yes, so the, so the conversation you had with them last Tuesday.
Yes.
And then you sent them plans.
Right.
And then the chief sent this email this morning.
Yes.
So he has not received any other plans between last Thursday and this morning?
No.
Okay, I just want to make sure I didn't miss a set of plans.
I'm not sure if he has seen this amended plan or not.
He saw the plan that Austin sent on Thursday, March 3rd.
Okay.
This is the email trail. I'm sorry, I'm holding it up. You can't see it. So Austin sent me the email with the plans attached, March 3rd, and the chief sent this email this morning.
Right.
So he's looked at your revised plans.
Okay, okay.
Okay, I just, I don't want there to be any confusion because he was unable to attend tonight.
We feel as if we've addressed the chief's concerns. The email that came in today doesn't make reference to any of the changes that we made to his comments. So it was my understanding that they really weren't addressing the most recent plan, but maybe they are. I'm not sure about that.
Just the paving really, if the old standing item. Can we address the old stuff?
I know the paving is, I guess, you know, I, well, it's ideal when it's brand new. After that, it looks like crap. It starts falling apart, your whole yard looks like you had a wall marking back in the 50s. But the, and the chief's always concerned, it's always been the stability of his trucks, which he mentioned. But, I mean, the only, the only concern is that those cars stay put where they're supposed to stay put. And to be honest, I've gone into paved parking lots when it's snow and everything just falls apart because you can't see the lanes, even though it's paved. If you can't, if you don't clean it, it doesn't make any difference. I don't know, I mean, how can you guarantee anybody's going to, even if you haven't paved and marked, that anybody's going to do what you want them to do anyway? But I think you shifting it over and, you know, people just being outrageous, not pulling their cars five feet, you know, sticking out the lane. I don't, I think unless those extreme conditions happen and you shifting it over, I don't see how, I think his intentions would, I mean, how could you? Can't guarantee it's clear anytime soon. I mean, tree could have fallen on it.
We're proposing, we're proposing a trigger date of November 30th. Where the lot must be paved regardless if we move forward with our second phase of the project.
Of this year?
Of this year. We want the lot paved before the winter. We understand the concerns with, with a paved lot. If we have a really snowy winter, a gravel lot, it's just not going to be able to get tight enough to that, you know, safe icy level. So we want, we plan on paving the lot. We want the lot paved. We're proposing a November 30th trigger date, at which time before we, we're going to get our stormwater calculations and our chamber plans done. We're going to submit them to the town engineer as soon as possible. And our request is that by either November 30th, if no action has been taken on our part with the planning board for a second site plan review for the second phase of this project, in which we plan on paving the whole lot and proposing that. If we haven't taken those steps for whatever reason, which I don't anticipate we won't have done by then, there'll be a trigger date of November 30th, by which time we will have the lot paved.
And if it's not?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
If it's not, there'll be a bond to forfeit. I'm not sure if you guys can withhold, you know, any sort of operation of shop, but it's.
It would probably be that you would close the operation down.
Yeah, so that, whatever it takes for you guys to feel sufficiently secure that that, you have teeth to enforce that, that trigger date, we're going to get the lot paved. It wouldn't work long-term without a paved lot. It's just as a small startup of local guys who, you know, are doing our own fundraising. This, the size of this parking lot is kind of cost prohibitive to open a business at because if it requires a full paving and stormwater and chambers off the bat, the investment sunk into that alone is, it's sort of disproportionately costly for us versus a more, a more traditional type cannabis shop lot, which is a lot smaller.
And you own the warehouse?
We have the property, we have a property interest, just a lease, a long-time lease right now. We plan on, you know, doing what we can to make that even more secure.
I would prefer that this thing be paved from the get-go, but you presented a plan tonight and we can hold you to that date. You've indicated a specific date in which you will pave that parking lot and we will hold you to that if this thing passes. You know, given my preference, it would be paved, repeating myself, but given my preference, it would be paved.
I understand.
Is the November 30th pavement date to pave just the front portion or the entire portion?
The idea is we want to pave the entire lot at once for cost reasons. We want to do it, I mean, it makes sense for us to do it all right now. It's just the cost of it is, you know, the cost of it, the delay it might cause to the project opening. It's just, there's a few considerations that make it so that the cost benefit analysis for us tilts towards doing an entire paved job sometime later.
Next turnaround, you're going to have to deal with drainage.
Yeah, so we know we're going to have to deal with drainage based on the size of the lot. We're already looking into the chambers needed for the stormwater runoff and whatnot. And it's a cost that we can, we can encourage just right off the bat. It would be pretty devastating to our, to our project.
Yeah, I think that raises the question about sequencing. So, you know, you have an open business, you'd have to do something underground, probably maybe dig around a little bit, have to pave it. Is that going to impact operations? Are you going to have to close for a few days to do this?
So we'd do it, the rear of the lot would not have any real business use at that time. So we could do the rear of the lot without interrupting business. The front of the lot, we could do half at a time to try to mitigate any sort of, you know, as long as the stormwater chambers allow us to do, it doesn't have to go dead center down the middle of the lot. Where our, you know, our idea is to do half the lot at a time to keep business open. But if we have to close down business to do the lot, we have to close down business to do the lot. The November 30th trigger date would still apply regardless of how we have to get it done. We don't want to close down business, but it's, it's a consideration of ours. If we can't find engineer plans for the stormwater chamber runoff sequence that allows us to keep business open, we'll do whatever we have to do to comply with the town's requirements.
Do you, what is the minimum number of spaces that you want to have for this for the next eight months?
I mean, it's all conjecture at this point. I think the South Shore has a serious untapped customer base for cannabis. I think even though surrounding towns like Rockland and even the Abington store are doing well, I think there's still a lot of customers who are shopping on the black market. And it's tough to say how many cars we'll need or how many point-of-sale stations or parking spots we'll need. But, you know, there's, there's stores around, you go to a shop, they got seven registers open and 10 people waiting outside to get in. So sometimes, and this is at 10:00 in the morning on a Tuesday. So it's tough to tell when the peak hours for these businesses are. You know, hopefully we need as many spots as we can have and the town's receiving tax revenue and everything's running smoothly and safely. But at this point in time, I can't say, you know, it's sort of one of those things where I believe that three or four years down the road, when the market's more saturated with people buying on the legal, from legal cannabis shops, that, you know, these are going to be very, you know, valuable businesses to be a part of. And, you know, we want to be able to service as many customers as we can as conveniently and quickly as possible.
I guess I just wanted to give you an out if you wanted to reduce the number of spaces.
Yeah.
Usually we have a lot of businesses that come before saying, well, can we kind of reduce it? We don't really need all these spaces. So I just want to give you the opportunity to make the same argument if you need to.
Well, if, the problem is if it's for fire apparatus requirements, then sure, we'll reduce the amount of spaces needed. But if it's just dead space on our lot, I figure, you know, there's no difference between putting 15 spots or 22 spots there if it's just parking lot space.
We, we've given our chief a lot to deal with, with development over the last few years. So we like to at least take his suggestions very seriously when it comes to how his vehicles maneuver through these developments, which is why I think we're, at least me personally, are just pausing a little bit.
So, I mean, we could present a, we're asking for site plan approval today. And we could present a, a third revised plan with less parking spots shown, if that would, you know, calm some of the board's concerns.
What I wonder if we could do, and please help me if this makes sense, is I think we'd have a couple of conditions, you know, gravel has to be kept in good condition, no ruts, pivot, divots, you know, whatever.
Yep.
Spaces marked out like you were talking about. But if the fire chief felt that they were shifting and they couldn't do it, that he can say, we need to pause, we need to redo this.
Absolutely.
Given the power, I don't want to say necessarily to shut you down, but basically saying you need to refix this.
I want to work collaboratively with the fire chief. I told him this already. I want to work in conjunction with him throughout the entirety of this project. So if that requires us to shut down based on concerns for safety of consumers or customers or anything along those lines, we'll, we have no problems with, you know, following recommendations of the, of the fire department. It's just, we really feel like site plan approval today is attainable based on our revisions to this plan if the board also agrees with us.
So I mean, if the fire chief comes to the town and says, this isn't safe, I can't get my equipment in and out, you understand that it's like, okay, we're.
Yeah, shut it down.
There's no hearing, there's no, you know, they're shutting it down.
Figure out a solution.
The chief has done it a couple of times. Wayne's been there and they just shut the drop down.
Really?
I've got a problem with the whole thing without the chiefs able to be here with an input. This latter obviously came after their revisions and the chief's still having concerns. I think you need to make the chief happy and explain the same things maybe that you just explained to us and get his blessing. Does he know about the November 30th parking lot date? I just got a problem, the chief isn't here and we're making a lot of assumptions on his part. But I'm one person.
Make sure the chief Nudle is satisfied that this thing will work, the fire department.
And I know, we can condition it. I'd still like to have his approval. And make sure these, he's got some concerns about the truck getting through there.
He had some concerns about.
I'd really like to have his input.
He had some concerns about engineering plans and whatnot that we addressed and he said that those were acceptable. He'd say in his letter that he, you know, we plan on working together moving forward in a collaborative fashion, I think.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you get, I think you were CC'd on the email he sent this morning though, yeah?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Just the last paragraph I'm talking about had a tone that was more collaborative than, you know, concerning.
Drainage and everything, that has to be put in before. In other words, this spring.
Yeah.
And then, so all the drainage would be in anyway, even though, even though they asked.
They're not proposing any drainage.
Yeah, okay. I didn't know whether stormwater protection plan was.
It will when they go to pave it.
But not until then.
And using a gravel surface and removing pavement, so not increasing the amount of pavement. But if they go to pave this, they need full engineered stormwater management.
That's the big issue. Paving's easy. The stormwater management is something.
Yeah, that's a whole different thing.
Yeah, a couple of comments. One of the other things the chief wanted to address on the plan was, I think you can do this by note, is he wanted a, a understanding of how snow removal is going to be achieved here so that the snow piles don't hurt and come to his ability to access the site. So I think you need to either show a snow removal area or put on the plan, as you mentioned the other day, that the snow would be removed from the site or load or whatever. I think that needs to be on the plan. That certainly could be a condition of approval if the board so chooses. But the chief was pretty clear that he wanted something to document where snow removal is going to be because he was concerned that that would further hinder his access. The second comment is, with this fire lane, are you planning on painting the fire lane on gravel and the directional allowance?
So the fire lane is going to be paved. That's actually a paved area. That's within the curtilage of the farmer's porch and the rest of the building. That will be paved. There's two signs, standing signs located on both sides of the farmer's porch that will say no parking fire lane. We could also include a sign on the farmer's porch if necessary, but.
Where's the fire lane designated on the plan?
Austin, do you want to help?
Yeah, yeah, so based on that conversation, we just proposed two of these, two signs here. On either side of the farmer's porch here.
This area here is paved. This is the fire lane.
Could you delineate it with some line stripes?
It's certainly something they could do. I don't know that it's necessarily required. We, you know, if we have another discussion with the chief, we can get their thoughts on it. What I thought was basically the delineation between gravel and pavement would be enough to basically kind of signify that it was, you know, a separate area for not parking.
I don't know about the lines. I wouldn't, I wouldn't make that assumption, unfortunately.
Right. So it's definitely something that can be done.
I think aesthetically, we'd rather not have the yellow lines painted right in front of the fire farmer's porch and would, would like to do vertical signage. But if the board and the fire department require those delineations to be painted, we will certainly do so as a condition of approval for any of those requirements. It's a, it's an easy solution on our end.
Is the fire lane intended to be for equipment, manpower, or vehicles or both? Is the fire lane intended to be for equipment, manpower, or vehicles or both?
It was really more of a factor of maneuverability, so we just provided a little extra space there. Realistically, on a day-to-day, maybe there's some people lined up there waiting to get in. So, it's not necessarily, you can, when they're going to pull into that site headfirst and, you know, they're going to pull right in and park their truck right there if there's ever an emergency situation. So, it's just more of a maneuverability situation. If there ever was a car backing out, they would still give them room to pull right in. That was my, you know, it's a, it is a, that front part of the site is a small area. The building is very small, the truck's longer than the building is, so.
Yeah, my understanding was that if a fire truck or another truck pulled in around this side, it came up this way, it's a nice place to park and we can exit based on your own egress right there. But it's, it's something that we'll definitely paint if it's our consent for the fire department.
Actually, I thought one of the things, Dave, that they were going to address was there's a gate back there that's open and that we wanted to keep the property, so people weren't coming in the left-hand side of the, the drive and driving around. Is, I see a fence, it looks like a fence all the way on this line.
Yeah.
So, you can't drive, so that, that is closed now?
Yes, it's currently closed.
And when you, it's got a lane of 21 feet, 21 feet four to back out and then there's a fence right behind it. I suppose if you've got a big vehicle, you shouldn't have pulled in there.
So, this, this area overhead, yeah, the loading zone.
Yeah, so that, that area is, basically, we're providing the four spaces in the rear, two of them are loading, two are employee only, and there's the one handicap space. The handicap space is, meets ADA and AAB requirements, it's nine by 18. And then, it will just have that 21.7 foot turnout lane, essentially.
The vehicles that these deliveries are made in, they're small vehicles, it's not, it's not our big, big loader trucks. The packaging size for the products we're going to sell, it's very small, usually done in a cargo van or something like that based on information and belief.
What type of fence are you proposing?
Aesthetically, I'm not sure yet, we haven't decided on whether it's going to be a mesh wire fence or a wooden fence or anything along those lines. There's an existing mesh wire fence with privacy curtain right here. We may continue, but I don't think that would aesthetically really be very nice. So, we'll figure out a solution that, that works well.
It's, it's usually part of the, the site plan, so.
Do we have a?
Says to be landscaping plan.
Do we have?
Is it on the landscaping plan?
Dave, do you know how tall it is? Do you know how tall the fence is?
It isn't, there's some, we have it.
I don't believe it's on the landscaping plan. But, yeah, I think the assumption would be to.
Typically, it's a six-foot white vinyl unless.
It's going to run all the way up to the side of the property and it's going to have, you know, grass between the fence and the property on the, on the left side. So, probably that six-foot white vinyl, you know, with landscaping located alongside it.
How tall will it be?
Six foot.
Thank you.
And, you know, clean landscaping along the entirety of the fence.
So, what should be added to the plan? Defense detail?
What, what advantage do you get by getting the site planned tonight versus a month from now?
It would allow us to pull a permit to start demolition construction. We submitted a demolition permit for the interior of the building today, but we weren't able to move forward with an exterior building permit without site plan approval based on our proposed site plan. So, we really just want to, you know, we're ready to go, we have a dumpster at the site, we have a crew ready to start work. We, we want the blessing to move forward and start, start making this real. And the concerns that have been presented to us, we, we want to address as fully as possible and we feel like we've done so. If conditions are required, we're willing to, to meet any conditions required.
I guess, I'm okay with this in the sense of, I don't want to hold you up, I want to let you get going. But is there a way that we can say that, you know, if you get into a disagreement with the fire department and it's 60 days from now, that you're not going to get an occupancy permit? I mean, is, that's the understanding, if we make a condition that they have to resolve whatever issue this is with the fire department and they don't, or they can't, they're not going to be able to open in 60 days or 90 days or whatever the timeline is. Is that accurate?
I don't know if it's legal.
Okay.
There's a special permit attached to this, correct? There is a special permit, so this is going to, is an appeal period for all the special permit, which you need to factor in. Is the building inspector going to issue a permit when you're in the appeal period?
I can't speak for the building inspector, but based on my discussions today with him, it seemed like he was, you know, in full support of the project.
I don't know that he can issue a permit while the appeal period is ongoing. You have a 21-day appeal period for a special permit. And then, that has to be recorded at the registry deed, so they usually require that recorded document to be submitted with the building permit application.
The 21-day period, it's, it's going to apply whether we approve today or whenever we approve. So, we just want to get moving forward if possible with, with the understanding that we don't plan on being adversarial at all with the Abington Fire Department. And we understand that the safety of customers is the, the main priority here, you know, both security-wise and emergency access-wise. If there's a, you know, honestly, if there's no solution available with a, with a gravel lot and there's no solution available, we strongly feel like the proposal that we have today addresses any, any reasonable concerns that one could have with the, the accessibility of our lot. It's a large lot to begin with and we should have ample room to, to handle any sort of issues that arise regarding access or snow removal or designated lanes. And it's a, it's our wish that we be able to move forward. I know financial concerns aren't a concern of this board, but as a small startup, we're, we're carrying costs that, you know, would, would like to move forward in a, in a safe and, you know, well-thought-out manner.
Would we predetermine a date that we'd readdress this and come back?
You wouldn't readdress this until April and then you still have 21 days, so.
Well, I was actually thinking of if he didn't make the, if they didn't do the paving at the end of the year.
Basically, what we're saying now is that, and I hope, I mean, obviously, you could have a problem between the date that they open and November 30th, but supposedly by November 30th, they'd have all the blacktop in there, whether it was the whole thing or just a portion of it. But I, I would think that we would have a cease and desist. I mean, unless they want to put up a bond, which is going to cost them money, which they really haven't wanted to do at this point, the only other, and even if they put up a bond, you can take the money, but you can't do the work because they own the property. You'd have their money, but.
Well, I guess I'm just looking at, I mean, there is, if parking got out of control and they, and the fire department, no matter, even if they've been in business 15 years, the fire chief could show up and call the building inspector and they could shut you down. So, there's really, there is a trigger in place to make sure that that is kept in some kind of order, I mean, you have some, a way of doing it.
It would be nice if the chief would say, "He's not here this evening," but I'm as much as anybody to get something going rather than every 30 days you wait. If you're trying to start a business, it's, it's a financial hardship of some sort of others, some sort of degree, worse for some people than other people. But I, I guess it's up to the board to decide whether or not you want to not have it paved until November 30th. And short of that, if you want to do what the, the chief said, then you would deny it. But.
Could you approve this, could you approve this special permit tonight and put the site plan off till April 4th and give them an opportunity to work it out? I think you still need to talk to the police chief too, right? I don't think I got anything from him.
Can we do a?
We have a security consulting company that we just hired last week, looked on our security plan for us.
Has the, has the police chief looked at that? Because I think that was one of the things.
We just hired them Friday of last week, so they're sending over an updated security plan narrative and the actual security plan for the, for the security of the building. The police chief will receive those documents. They've worked closely with hundreds of other cannabis businesses in the state.
I thought you were going to meet with him.
I will meet with him if he hasn't, yeah, I'll, I'll reach out for, for a meeting for sure. We're going to work closely with the police department and the Abington Fire Department and the Cannabis Control Commission over the course of the next three, four months to, to get every part of this hammered down. The, the only request I've gotten from the police chief is to submit the security plan to him when it's finalized and when we have a security consulting company in place. So, that's the next step as far as I'm concerned with the police chief.
Can you forward me that email?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
If, if you want it.
Yep, he didn't, he didn't CC me on it, I can throw it in the file and then I'm not asking you.
I think it was a phone call.
Okay.
Might have been a phone call, but I'll keep you involved, I'll go forward.
Yeah, and I, that, but once, that plan isn't correct, for whatever reason, the police department can close them down, so. I guess I'm all for not holding somebody up, but I still have some concerns that the building inspector and the fire chief aren't on board with this. Can we, I'm just going to throw it out there, can we do a conditional approval based on making the fire chief and the building inspector happy?
I don't see why not.
Would you hold on with that?
And I'm dead fast on this, this deadline of the parking being done.
For the snow.
Or it's, or it's done.
So, I'm, I'm just going to play devil's advocate here before we start breaking conditions down, what if they want it paved?
And then, then they don't get it.
Then it's not, then, then the site plan approval goes away? Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yes, yes, goes away. But I, I think you guys could make the same, lack of better words, argument that you made to us today and get them on board with this.
Yeah, we'll do what we can to get them on board. If we can, great, if we can't, then we'll.
Tape it out in the field, invite them down, you know, because he's had to do, he's done it before, he's brought the truck down to see if he thinks he's going to get more than that.
We'll, we'll take whatever steps we can to.
And I think what's selling this to us is that by the time you open and get operational, it's going to be four or five months before you're starting to pave anyway. We're not talking three years of this.
No, we'll, we're not going to have the snow by the time we're opened up. By that time, it'll be, you know, hopefully, spring.
Hopefully, is part of your argument with, however you want to phrase it, with the, with the chief and the building inspector.
I mean, I want it to open soon, but it's, I can't see it opening before June 1st.
Right, whatever that date may be, that's, that's what we're planning on.
By November 30th, it's going to be. And certainly, it's better weather there, if you have a problem, you can probably get in and out of a lot better.
So, it's a, it's a funding thing. It's a, it would help us out to be able to put our raised funds towards stocking our shelves and covering employee costs to start up as opposed to the paving. Once we are operational for a couple of months, we understand it's a cost that we're going to have to incur.
I get it, it's very unusual that, that we're even going this far with this.
We're bending over pretty far, I think, so you appreciate that.
I thoroughly appreciate everything the town's done.
All for business getting going and creating some revenue, paying taxes for the town.
Extra taxes.
Employing people.
Yeah, yeah, however you want to put it. I still have a problem with the fire chief and the, and the building inspector not being on board.
Yeah, I mean, if you told, if you were going to pave this and they were happy, we wouldn't have had this L.O.A. discussion.
We've gotten some prices, it's, it's pretty substantial for the front and back, it's, it's a big job. It's, it's going to make it so we don't have as much product on our shelves for opening day, it's going to, you know, affect the business in ways like that. If it's possible to.
Do you have the sprinklers?
Yeah, we have sprinklers.
Is it the factory's sprinkle too?
No, we don't have sprinklers in the building, no, no, sorry. We have just smokes in the building. It's a, the fire chief did say that sprinklers wouldn't be needed for this job. Our insurance company may have their own requirements, but we don't anticipate having sprinklers installed inside the building. The architect and the building department, we've been in communication with them regarding sprinklers in the fire department.
Yeah.
So, I, I would be in favor on, on the condition with the other little things with the fence and all the mother.
So, it's that the fire chief and the building inspector must agree on the parking lot plan if, if they want it paved, then the site plan approval disappears and we come back.
And then, and it will be, it will be completed by November 30th.
Well, that's just, that's just for them to agree, that's the first condition if they agree, right?
It would be without blacktop until before November 30th. Blacktopping will be completed on November 30th.
But if they want it done?
If they want it done, then, then it's denied.
Okay.
That's a condition.
That's the first condition?
That's the condition, yeah.
All right, and then the Norwood Engineering Letter of February 2nd and that the snowplow area needs to be delineated or how snow will be removed.
The fence needs to be put on the plan.
Fence detail needs to be added to the plan.
Gravel area kept in good condition.
As you provisions for snow removal.
And the warehouse isn't, isn't included in this, right? The warehouse has nothing to do with the site plan approval, that's going to be.
No, that's correct. How does the board feel about fire lane markings?
Probably leave that up to the chief.
Yeah.
There's actually, there's other things you can do to keep people from driving, you can do artwork if you want to.
They got, they got a huge fire lane in front of, in front of Loos, people park there all the time. The applicant would be, hey, get your car out of there.
We'll have, we'll have staff working the doors. Ideally, we'll just have our, our, you know, greeter, more or less, just tell the people to move their car immediately if they decide to park there.
All right, so fire lane markings are required?
Fire lane, to the, to the chief's recommendation.
Dave, do you have anything else?
I think you got.
Just putting in as a catch-all, any outstanding comments in our review dated.
Your February 2nd review?
Okay. So, you want to read the motion?
Want to read it?
Yes, motion to approve the site plan with the conditions that the fire chief and the building inspector must agree on the parking lot plan. If they determine it needs, needs to be paved and the site plan approval is revoked, contingent upon compliance with the Norwood Engineering Letter dated 2/22, that the snowplow area is delineated or a note on how the snow will be removed is added, that the fence detail, fence detail needs to be added to the plan, the gravel area needs to be kept in good condition, the warehouse is not included in this site plan approval, and the fire lane markings may or may not be required, it'll be the chief's recommendation.
And so, and just to add at some point in there, the pavement will be applied base and final code prior to November 30th.
So, it should be approved before then, right? Because here's my concern, November 30th, he would have to probably come to see you guys in September.
Well, that's fine, but I mean, he's.
So, it has to.
He, he has to have the, the blacktop down by November 30th on the ground.
We'll, we'll be proactive there.
I mean, you can come in next month for the stormwater for all we care.
We're going to get our stormwater calculations done right away. As soon as they're done, we'll get them to you guys with the, the idea that we do it at a.
By November 30th, right?
If, or before, if we. If, or before, if we move to the second phase of this project, the warehouse.
Is there a separate thing on a special permit?
I don't think so. I think you can just approve the special permit without any conditions. Because it's just operating marijuana.
You said it was a special permit.
Yeah, yes, for the use.
For the use.
Yep, so you don't need conditions?
No.
You can just.
We can do that also for marijuana. Right, so a motion as read by Liz. Hold on, I'll make that motion. Bob, second by Bruce. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Now the special permit for marijuana retail establishment. Motion, seconded Bruce. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you, sincerely appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Oh, here's the hearing, right?
Yeah.
The planning board will hold a public hearing on Monday, March 7, 2022, at 6:15 p.m. at Abington Town Hall. The Abington, the planning board is to consider the following amendments to the Town of Abington zoning bylaw, chapter 175. The full text of the proposed zoning amendments and all supporting documentation can be found at the planning board office and the town clerk's office in town hall and additionally can be found at the Town of Abington website. One, amend 175.24-3 Marijuana Overlay District by creating a separate Marijuana Overlay District for production and cultivation use only in the MUPDD called the Marijuana Production and Cultivation District. Two, amend the zoning bylaw by adding a new section titled Battery Engine Energy Storage. Three, amend 175-21 Table of Use Residential Use in the Highway Commercial by adding 12 units, all S is no and prohibited, and create and greater than 12 units as special permit allowed by special permit. Amend 175-66D Buffer Strips by providing that the expansion of a commercial properties by adding new land will constitute an additional requiring compliance with 175-66D. Five, amend 175-65 Trees by referencing the Town Stormwater Management Bylaw and Regulations in Subpart A and increasing the diameter of trees to be preserved from five inches in diameter to six inches in diameter, adding a planned requirement, removing the required locations of trees, requiring native trees, and providing clarity to height requirements in Subpart B. Six, amend the zoning map to include the proposed Marijuana Overlay District for Production and Cultivation. Seven, amend 175.24.1 by replacing registered marijuana dispensaries with medical marijuana treatment center and by replacing the acronym RMD with acronym MMTC throughout Wayne P. Smith, Chairman, advertising the Brockton Enterprise 22122 and 22822.
Do the battery one first?
The first one we'll take up is amend the zoning bylaw by adding a new section titled Battery Energy Storage. And we have received a letter from town council.
Okay, here it is.
Attached, from town council, attached are my proposed revisions, comments on the zoning amendments you sent over. On the MJ MOD overlay article, I used Sean Riley.
Yeah, she used Sean's comments and then she was.
Oh, I used Sean Riley's red line and added my revisions and comments. I am very concerned with the battery storage article and encourage the board to consider postponing this until the fall. I have at least two towns, Carver and Medway, that are looking for moratoriums on these uses as they are way more impactful than the towns thought. Also, there is nothing in the article about amending 175-21. Further, it appears that the article may have come from New York. So much of the terminology is wrong. See my revisions, comments on the attached. Thanks, Amy. So I don't know whether you want to go through all that or whether you want to make a recommendation that we withdraw the article or whether you want to go forward.
I wish we kind of knew what the problems had been, but just for educational purposes. I don't see, I mean, if they've discovered the bigger issues than it looks like, I guess we should educate ourselves first before we. What was, we wanted to put this right in, otherwise they would be able to.
Yes, and that was one of the things that I brought up. And she said, no, because it's not listed in our uses. So therefore, unlike some other articles as we've had in the past, she said, in this particular case, they would not be allowed to have the battery storage area.
Oh.
Yeah. I can send that to you if I can give it to you.
Do you want me to read that?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, can I make a quick comment?
Sure, maybe I can answer through this and then you do that, all right?
It's not substantial, substantive. I just wanted to say, town council's letter referred to the fact that she added comments on top of my proposed edits. I didn't make any edits. I think she meant to say on top of Liz's edits. So I just wanted that for the record. I didn't make any edits to this bylaw.
Thank you, Sean. If it is not a use listed in 175-29, 21, it cannot be built except as provided by law or in this bylaw. In each district, no building, structure, or land shall be used or occupied except for the purposes permitted as set forth in the accompanying table of use regulations 175-21. That's your comment.
Thank you.
Any comment on the public? So what is your desire, members?
I'll put it out till fall.
Put it off? Just taking it along.
Do we have some more information?
All right, so can I just have a motion to withdraw the article and that if we are unable to withdraw it, then?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Motion made to withdraw.
Sorry, put the moderator out.
Go ahead.
Or we'll pass over a town meeting.
Thank you.
Gotcha.
Preferences to withdraw the article completely. If it can't be withdrawn by the selectmen, then your motion is to pass over, recommend to pass over.
Not my first town meeting.
On the motion? Motion made, executive, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Amen 175-21 Table of Use Residential Use in the Highway Commercial by adding 12 units or less is N prohibited and greater than 12 units is S.P. allowed by special permit.
So this, this gets to our role as masters of land use, basically. And my concern is that over the next couple of years, with housing prices what they are, it's going to be much more economically beneficial for people to take commercial property on Route 18 and convert it into multifamily housing. I don't want this to come off as anti-multi-family housing because frankly, the town has quite a bit of it. What's number?
Forty-two percent.
Forty-two percent of the town is multifamily housing. That's a lot. We've done our part.
And that doesn't consider the projects that are on the board already?
Correct.
One of which has been approved.
So I think it's prudent of the town to protect its commercial land, particularly along its main commercial corridor. So what this does, it says, basically, I may need to change this so that it's under 12 units. The reason I put 12 is because 175-32, multi-unit dwellings, apartments, condominium complexes of 12 residential units or more, that's kind of where we already have an established delineation line of big project for small project. So we need, I would need to make that one amendment. But basically saying that there, we really don't want at this point multifamily housing under 12 units. That, we have a couple already that we've seen. They're okay, but really, this is land that we should try to be preserving for commercial use. And, but, on the other hand, that's all, the highway district's also where if someone wants to come in and build 50 units, frankly, that's where it belongs. So we're leaving it open for larger projects because of the traffic avenue, but generally, we don't want four units here, or three units here, or five units here, or six units here, and now all of a sudden, a significant chunk of our commercial properties has been eaten up.
Oh, never mind, you answered the part with special permit.
Yeah, so what this does is say, right now, it's allowed by special permit. It splits, actually, let me step back. Multifamily housing is allowed in highway commercial by special permit currently. This would separate it into 12 and over, 12 units and over, and 11 and under. 11 and under would be changed from special permit to no, and 12 and over will be kept as special permit required.
So 12 or more we're keeping and then it's going to say less?
Yeah, so we have to amend the language so that it's, yeah, so it's greater than, it's 12 and greater.
12 units or more and then 13 units or less?
No, 11 or less.
11 or less? And then town council made a suggestion, you change buildings to development?
Yep.
Do you want to add that?
Yes, please.
I wonder what the zoning board, I mean, they've approved some properties on 123 for residential. Seems like they have some views on this. I wonder if they've.
Basically, in my mind, it, you then have to have a higher threshold in order to get that variance. Not, this doesn't say it can never happen, but it says it needs to have a higher threshold for, you know, to put six units on Route 18 on land, frankly, that probably we would prefer. You can't get a variance if it's a no?
Nope.
Yeah, you can get a variance.
You can try.
You try. You're probably not going to get it.
So what about if you want to put a commercial on first floor, thousands of.
So this has come up, and this is something that I didn't take into consideration admittedly, is where we want to create space for a mixed-use project where it's office space, retail space, restaurant on the first floor, and then two, three floors of residential.
Two or three apartments above it?
Yeah.
Or one or two apartments above it? Because that sort of gives them the income to have the store down below.
That makes sense. We just don't want houses. We have so little property.
The problem is you can't amend that now.
But I think there's going to be a better way to do it than just saying no, because the zoning board has made it clear that they're not renting buildings.
Yep, I'm okay with that, frankly.
Well, that's mine, if that's the case. So if that's the case, then we need zoning bylaws so people can use their property then.
Uh, yeah, but we're also in charge of land use. So I guess a question for the moderator would be, can we change this to?
You can't.
I didn't know, there's little tweaks you can do, but I didn't know what.
You can't amend it because that's how it was advertised, was simply on the residential portion.
Unless it was a minor change.
Yeah, I didn't know if just adding.
Like that number change is okay because you're just more clearly defining what your intent was? But to add a mixed use on the bottom now changes the whole flavor.
Yep. Sean Riley, 500 Washington Street, as moderator, and I also want to speak as Sean Riley, 271 Dorsey Street, as a resident. So let me just start with moderator. What, what version of this was actually advertised? The one on the left-hand column where it says consisting of 12 units or more and then the second part being less than 12 units?
The ad just said amend the table of use in HC by adding 12 units or less is no prohibited and greater than 12 units is S.P. allowed by special permit. That is what the ad was.
Okay.
And it also said that the full extent of the bylaw was available at.
Yeah, my question was, the original draft that came out said in Part A was more than 12 units, and Part B said less than 12 units, but it, so it didn't address what if you have 12 units? That's one of the additions, edits that town council was, she said 12 or more or less than 12. So that covers you. Just semantics, but I want to make sure that whatever's being put in the warrant doesn't skip over the number 12. All right, 12 or more, your point, which aligns with 175-32, and then under 12, or less than 12 is the phrase she uses. Now I want to step over and talk as resident and local real estate attorney. I share some of the comments from Mr. Bazanson, and I, I'm a resident of this town. I represent a lot of developers, both commercially and residentially, as you know. I would love to find a magic way to get more commercial development on Route 18. Some people think that the improvements to Route 18, some call it an improvement, some don't, might bring more commercial development because now the people who own single-family houses on Route 18, when it comes time to sell, I think they'll probably have very few buyers looking to buy a house on Route 18 with four lanes on part of Route 18. So I think we all contemplate or hope that it's going to be converted. The older houses will probably be removed and replaced with what we'd like to see is commercial development. I think the answer is allowing mixed-use development on Route 18, as Alex said and Rick has mentioned. But the way this is drafted makes it very difficult. I have a couple of concerns, and I'm glad you put the map up here because the highway commercial zone is basically most of Route 18, not all of it. Most of Brockton Avenue, there's an area on Groveland, which is essentially the dump and Cape Cod Lumber, so that's already developed. And then there's also an area on Center Avenue, which is Target in and over in that area. Across the street from Target, there are a bunch of small houses in very small lots, 54-wide lots. Going down Route 18, most of the lots are very small in width. My concern is, what you're saying is you would, and rightfully so, larger commercial and larger residential developments should be on those highway commercial corridors because they generate traffic. The problem is, if you want to have 12 or more units, 175-32 kicks in. And it says, you can't put it in highway commercial unless you have 200 feet of frontage and then a larger than normal lot because you have more than 12 units. Whether it's 12 or 62, you need a 200-foot wide lot. I don't know that a single lot like that exists that's not already developed. So that would mean you're essentially prohibiting multifamily dwelling of any size up and down Route 18 and on Brockton Avenue. And I know that some people would say, great. But the negative is, what happens to these older houses and old structures now as years go by? People pass away and they need to sell it off. And they can't use it now for residential housing because of this bylaw. So their only option is commercial. And the problem we're having is you can't fiscally, and a business plan, and Mr. Fiore and Mr. Bazanson probably talked to this, to build a single commercial building on a small lot is almost, it's basically suicide if you're investing because now you have one tenant. And what we just saw with COVID, when that one tenant closes, you have no income, you can't pay the mortgage, buildings don't get maintained or buildings get foreclosed. So your only other option is try to buy multiple small lots on Route 18 in Abington. But now your investment of just purchasing that site is huge, never mind your construction costs. So for that reason, I mean, keep in mind, our zoning bylaws already allow commercial development on Route 18 as of right. You can build a retail store if you want to. You can build a restaurant if you want to on Route 18 without getting zoning permission. You have to go to the planning board with a site plan review. But you have to have the size building you need to support your mortgage, your income. You have to have the parking lot that's required by that type of use. So with all these small lots, it doesn't happen. I can't sell my small, single-family house lot on Route 18. I can't sell my small, single-family house lot on Route 18 to a commercial developer, you know, for one small building with one tenant, you know, a hair salon. It's not going to work, and I say that with confidence because it doesn't happen now. You could do it right now as of right, but people don't make that chance. I'm not going to spend half a million or a million dollars to build a small commercial building with one tenant. Can't do it, and no bank's going to lend it to you, lend the money for you. So I appreciate and acknowledge that this is a discussion worth having. I don't think this is the answer right away. I think we need to have, what I really think we need is a town planner to help us, and to try to attract business to Abington, because we already have the zoning set up to allow business in Abington, but why aren't they coming here? That's what we have to do, is get them attracted here. Some of it is because of the small lots that are just cost prohibitive to buy and develop. So mixed-use, I think, is a better option. If you want to have some smaller development on the smaller lots, then have a retail store or two with a couple of units above. That's what you see has allowed Abington Center and North Abington Center to survive. My law office has two apartments above. You know, Dave Nisby's Barber Shop has apartments above, Martin's Bakery has apartments above, Bemis Drug has apartments above, sadly, they're no longer with us. But those are the things that, in a small town, can really happen. We can wait for a large commercial national entity to come in and buy six lots and build a big thing, but in reality, Abington's been pretty fortunate for a small town to have Stop &amp; Shop, Target, Lowe's, Federal Express, some huge national companies have invested in the town of Abington. So, and if you remember, it wasn't that long ago, Rockland was really angry at Abington because we attracted some of their big businesses to come to Abington. So in that regard, we've done a good job. But we all know that Route 18 is going to change in the future. I don't think this is going to make any change for the better. I don't have all the answers, but I just want to say that I'm concerned about implementing this as proposed doesn't get us there, and I would rather not tinker with it. I would rather kind of maybe have a forum where we can bring in some property owners and some local commercial bankers and some commercial brokers and say, what is it that we need to do? Do we write a mixed-use bylaw in sections of the highway commercial? That might be an answer, and there might be something else that is above my pay grade that I'm not thinking of it. I just wanted to put that out there on the record. I can't support this. As moderator, I'll be stepping down during these zoning discussions because I'm involved with this discussion. I just, I don't think, I should keep my mouth shut at this point, but I will as a moderator at town meeting. Thanks. Do you know if there's a town planner in the budget for next year?
So as a selectman, Alex Bazanson, 761 Randall, I'm not positive to answer your question. Yeah. Scott is talking about it, but our hope is that maybe with some of this cannabis money or something that comes in kind of unexpectedly over the next several months, we might be able to at least do a part-time. And the other thing we're looking at is maybe, and you and I talked about this, is working with another town for a planner. It's definitely something we need, and I agree with Sean. I think we need to get some more input, and I absolutely understand why, you know, you put this article forward, and I agree with that. We don't want to put all residential in all our commercial property, but I think we need to look at this a little more and maybe come up with, tweak it, or come up with something else that we can do, at least the mixed-use. We have a lot of property on Route 123 in Abington that, not a lot, but there are some lots on 123 that I think would be perfect for a store or an office on the first floor with a couple of apartments. And the one going up next to Fiore, you know, I mean, my hope on that would have been to have some retail on the first, but that's been approved for residential. So I definitely understand what you're saying, but I just think we need some more time, and I would encourage you to put this off until the fall, too. And I think we are going to need a fall town meeting this year. We didn't have one this past year, but I will encourage the board of selectmen and the town manager to do a fall town meeting. But I just think we need to look at this a little more.
Thank you. No, I understand, and I know where this is heading. My concern is that Brockton Ave. property that we approved, I mean, that is what we're going to see on every lot that is feasible up Route 18 and down 123, are those little three, four-unit townhouses, and I really don't like that Brockton Ave. one because it's so small. But you get, every residential house on Route 18 is being eyed by some developer...
What happened on the corner of Chapel Street, too?
Yep. And, you know, I, the longer that we put off finding a solution, the more these properties are going to be snatched up over the next couple of years. So I'm willing to put this off and try to see if we can do some legwork and figure out a better solution, but I think we need to figure out what we're going to do about it, or we're going to wake up one day and just half the, all those houses are going to be multiplied into three and four units.
I'm just hoping that, you know, echoing what selectman Bazanson said, we do need a town planner. You don't necessarily, I have an issue with communities sharing town planners, because, not just because I am a planner, but inevitably, a community that shares a town planner will have a greater need for the planner than, you know, one community will have a greater need, and the person will be spending the majority of his or her time with another community. I think a solution to that conceivably could be part-time town planner, someone who could work 18, 20 hours a week solely for the town, and...
That's what I meant by sharing it.
But, but I mean, you know, Alex, really, you, I think you can hire someone who had retired or something like that to work solely for the town, you know, for 18, 20 hours a week, because people who have retired from government are restricted to the number of hours that they can work per year for their pension. And so I think if you found someone who could work within those restrictions and vote their attention solely to the town of Abington, I think that would work. And I think, I know you can't really dedicate revenue streams, but I mean, what was brought up about the cannabis money, for example? If a portion of the revenue stream from the cannabis money could be, you know, directed toward having an employee in a part-time town...
Whoever department's going to want that.
Oh, I understand, I understand, I understand that.
But it is our hope to start generating some of this money and be able to do something.
Yeah. Because I don't want to share a town planner with another town. I want that planner's focus, and we do need one. We really, we absolutely need one. We've had one in the past, but I think we've come to the realization that in 2022, Abington needs to have someone devoting their interests to the town of Abington to protect our interests. And I strongly urge anyone out there to write a town meeting warrant article encouraging a town planner at the fall town meeting.
We get that on at the fall?
In the fall town meeting.
Any other public comment? What is your desire at this point?
So we're talking about this one thing, still.
Yeah.
We're going to postpone this.
We should postpone.
Are we going to withdraw this, or are we going to go forward with it?
Withdraw, all right.
Is that your motion?
Yep.
Motion to withdraw.
Seconded.
Any further discussion?
Do you take the same type of motion you did on the prior one?
Yes, yep.
That's actually what I wrote down. Or pass over.
Or pass over.
We want to get that straight. To me, the win's our pass over.
Right. So on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
In unanimous?
Thank you, Rick.
Amend 17566D buffer strips by providing that the expansion of commercial properties by adding new land will constitute an addition requiring compliance with 17566D.
Again, this is based on, I think, some instances we've seen in past couple of years. Right now, when we have commercial properties that are residential, there needs to be a vegetated buffer strip. If it's a pre-existing, then they don't have to do anything until there's an alteration or addition. But apparently, that's a little fuzzy, because we've had businesses basically buy the land next to theirs, clear-cut it, cut everything down, tear everything down, pave over every inch, and that's it, and never put up a buffer strip. So this basically just makes it very clear that adding new land to your commercial property is considered an alteration or an addition, and that this buffer strip bylaw applies to your business, and you have to put a buffer strip in.
Yeah, I should...
I don't want to call out specific businesses, but...
Well, we've already had this problem in town. That's not just the only ones.
Yeah.
I agree that we, I think that makes sense.
Go ahead.
I'm with you on this one. I'm handing out just a copy of what the existing wording is in the bylaw versus what was proposed, or I think I was trying to...
It's already gave yet.
And, and town council had made some suggested edits. So the current bylaw says, established businesses, established business and industrial properties actively engaged in business at the time of acceptance of this bylaw, which was several years ago, shall not be required to provide buffer zone construction until such time that additions or alterations are made to such properties. So much what Rick had said is, if you expand that property, then it triggers the need to put buffers in. But that phrase, until such time as additions or alterations are made to the properties, is kind of vague. So Rick had suggested the addition to say, basically that if you acquire additional abutting property, that is a trigger, that is considered an addition or alteration. Town council came up with some wording, had at the bottom, well, I came up with wording which I think is much simpler and gets to it, and also that I think the buffering, the new buffers should be added if you do buy more land or if you expand your building. So I'm doing, suggesting a little bit more than what is on the table. So I'm saying that existing businesses would trigger the buffer requirements at such time that a building or the lot itself is expanded or enlarged. Now, obviously, they have to come to you if they're going to enlarge their commercial building. So site plan review, you're going to be able to look at the buffers right then and there. If they buy additional land for whatever purpose, as their own buffer or to expand their parking, then they must install their buffer, which is, you know, solid fencing and trees and things like that. So the section down the bottom is what I'm suggesting that the board put forth for town meeting, which again, I'll step down as moderator, but I think it does everything that Mr. Collins had suggested, but I think it just is, it clarifies it, and it's easier wording. But that's why we're having a public hearing.
Are there any other comments on that in the public? Board members?
It does what it wants. You're looking to do, right?
I think so.
Yeah.
Do you agree with that, Rick?
Yep. We have to, you don't need to repost this or anything.
No, because it's not substantially changing it, so of a motion to have that wording in the, in the town warrant?
A move to amend as proposed by Sean Riley, resident.
Seconded. Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five. Amend 17565 trees by referencing the town stormwater management bylaw and regulations in Subpart A and increasing the diameter of trees to be preserved from five inches in diameter to six inches in diameter, adding a planned requirement, removing the required location of trees, requiring native trees, and providing clarity to height requirements in Subpart B.
Yes, Alex.
Alex Bazanson, again, I have a question on this one. What does stormwater management reference exactly? Just the diameter?
Stormwater, it references the stormwater bylaws that we have.
Right, but I mean, regarding the trees, it's...
It references...
So it doesn't say if you take down 100 trees, you have to plant 10 trees, or anything like that?
It says...
25%?
Figure out, every tree removed that were six inches in diameter, and then your initial goal is to replace 25% of that number.
Okay.
That's what this bylaw...
That's what the suggested change.
Okay.
Stormwater management.
No.
No, that's my point. Stormwater management doesn't say that.
Stormwater...
So this bylaw will say to, if you take down 100 trees, you have to plant 25?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. So the background is that our new stormwater management bylaw has more strict language when it comes to tree removal and then replacement, replenishment...
Right.
Post-construction, but it's...
Just like wetland replication. We need something in there that's going to force them to put something back.
So currently, all we require basically is two trees per lot.
Yeah.
And that can be two pear trees along the sidewalk out front, and everything else behind it is, remains down. So the idea is, all right, let's start with a number to hit, so there would be a one for four, which doesn't sound great, but you have to have a front yard, a backyard, side yard, access to the house in case there's a fire or an emergency.
Right.
Underground utilities, I mean, all these things in consideration, as Wayne pointed out, there's a lot of things to take into consideration. But then, the idea is to have the developer or the proponent say, I can't make the 25%. What I can do, though, is this, and have a plan that we then review.
Okay.
It's to make them do some work and say, this is the best way that I can meet this standard.
So at least we're not going to get a clear cut and then two trees planted back?
Correct.
That was my point.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
And town councils point about, yes, that when they plant the tree, it doesn't have to be a 30-foot-tall tree.
Now, that's, that's a little exaggeration in the height.
Yes, it's ideally, when they mature, it'll be at least 30 feet.
Yeah, you're better off having just the diameter rather than the height.
Okay.
Yeah. Because you, very few trees, you'd be able to buy that were that tall to begin with.
Yeah.
The problem I have is with this whole article is the fact that we hate to see, the town of Abington has more canopy than most other towns in this, in the state of Massachusetts, unless you go all west. And clear-cutting is a problem, and I understand it. I also understand the fact that when you disturb the ground, a lot of these trees are going to die. I have probably spent $25,000 on my property where I live today over a period of time, mainly because the fill was brought in, and you can even look at oaks now, which it's amazing that they have lived, but you can look and see that there was a tremendous amount of fill put in around the base of those trees. Also, when I first moved in there, and the house had been there for 30 years, on occasion, I stepped somewhere and went down four feet because the trunk rotted out because of how it was, how it was managed. That being said, when you put in a sidewalk, when you put in a drainage ditch, when you do almost anything on the property, where you're changing grades, where you're putting a house, where a tree was growing in the shade is now growing, or is growing in the sun perhaps, is now growing in the shade, and I can show you books and everything else that will tell you that it's a bad policy. That being said, if you look, I was downstairs in a room and explaining it, and I looked over by the library and said, see all those trees that are over there between the field and the library? Any of, all those trees, if you were building a house, should be removed because they're going to end up eventually on your house because of what you dug out, or just for the pure fact that there's not a lot of root system, the way they're growing in the woods are not, that's the way it is. And I could explain it to anyone that wants to see it.
So it's not black and white?
So it's just not practical, and it's, and it's dangerous for the homeowner, and it's expensive for the homeowner... for the homeowner when, at some point, they need to take it down. I am in favor of having as much tree property as you possibly can. We've had people that have come before us when we've said there's going to be two oak trees in your front yard, and they say, "I'm going to cut them down as soon as I move in." And I don't know what we have for restrictions presently to make them, leave them up. And we also got involved in a lot of this because we had the pear trees, normally referred to as pear trees, there's quite a few varieties, that should not be, not be planted. One of the varieties is Bradford pears, and quite frankly, they're a messy tree. If you have a car and it's anywhere near them, you wish they weren't there because they're just covered with, from the birds. And they're very brittle, and after about 30 years, you're going to use a saw to cut them down. So we've tried to have, we try now to tell the people in town that certain trees are unacceptable. We want to see what the plan is. All that being said, I'd like to see more plants, more trees in people's yards. Inevitably, they want to put a pool in, or they want to do something else. I don't know how you have that remain, and I agree with the fact that they cut down a wooded area, it'd be nice to see some more trees. I quite, I don't quite know how to write a bylaw. One of the things in this is that the planning board may, rather than shall, require you to have so many trees, so that's...
Well, I think the intent of this is probably more so for developers and a single-family home. It's not the single-family home I'm worried about going in and clear cutting and putting a house up because they're going to want trees and they're going to want that, but it's, you know, let's be honest, Mr. Caraffas went up there and clear cut Sean's neighborhood, you know, and that was a disaster because of the water and running down Dorsey Street and Crossley Street. And that was a mess for years until Mr. Rosen bought it and did it right. So that's what my concern is more, the larger developments, that I think, just like conservation. Conservation requires, if you fill wetlands, you have to replicate wetlands, and I think the same should apply with the trees to some degree. I don't know if 25% is a number, 10% is a number, but I think there has to be a set number and, you know, the discretion of the planning board, I think, you know, and you can require, conservation requires certain species for replication. You can require certain species of trees, and I think that's how it needs to be handled in the future.
And I think the other thing, Alex, is that trees that you might say today is fine, and tomorrow you might say, I mean, for instance, you don't want anybody to plant an elm tree.
Right.
When I was a kid, we were spraying elm trees with DDT, and it was covering our bodies and everything else, but obviously, you can't, they don't grow anymore, and we've had problems with sugar maples in certain areas and, you know, now we've got the ashwara. So the...
So maybe a large developer needs to bring in a botanist, just like they do in conservation, something like that.
Yeah, I'm not sure of that, but I think that the planning board hopefully would, at the time, be able to tell them what kind of trees would be acceptable.
Right.
But rather than say, "This tree's eliminated, and this one's okay."
Right, right. And like I said, my concern's not the single-family home, it's the large developments. And I definitely understand, you know, some trees during construction aren't as stable afterwards. So, I mean, that's something, I guess it's a...
Situation?
It's not an easy answer, but I think it's something we need to at least start with, and that could be amended down the road or at your discretion.
Sean Riley, 271 Dorsey Street. I also support this bylaw. We, in just two things for the viewers at home, Mr. Wayne Smith has been in the tree nursery business for decades.
Wow.
I'll leave it at that, and that's why he speaks so intelligently about this. The second thing, there already is an existing bylaw, so people at home understand that limits, tries to preserve trees that are five inches or bigger, other than the area of the actual construction activity. Obviously, if you have a treed lot and you're going to build a house, you have to cut down some trees to build a house in the driveway and the front lawn and everything. I share some of the comments that both Wayne and Alec made. I think this bylaw can be and should be updated, but I think we need to put some work into it. I think we should compare some of the other local towns, what they do for wording, because I think what a lot of people would think or envision is, well, if you're going to have a couple of lots in a subdivision, why don't you just clear the minimal and like leave a strip of trees down the lot line so you have like a privacy barrier? And as Wayne alluded to, that can be the worst thing you ever do, because if you picture a forest of trees, obviously, the trees on the edge of the forest are the ones that bear the brunt of the wind and the storms, and the ones in the middle don't get the wind. You know, they're sturdy because they're protected. But when you take out some of the trees on the edge, and now those inner trees are now the outer trees, that's when you have problems, those are the first to fall. And we've seen it, I had eight trees in my backyard go down in that big storm, and they were all along the edge. And my neighbor had tried to keep some down her lot line, she had about five or six trees coming down, and after a year of living there, they had to hire someone to come cut them down. So I think we need to have a little language in here that allows you for, you know, good tree, you know, healthy, for health reasons of a tree, for safety reasons of a house. And typically, there's a little yin and yang going where honestly and selfishly, a house developer who's building a house is going to clear basically all he needs to and not much more, because he's paying to cut down all these trees. They'll usually do, you know, from the street to the house, 20 feet to the left and right, and maybe 30 or 40 feet out back, but even if they have another 100 feet to go, they're not going to clear that land. The buyer, the home buyer can do it. This bylaw would kind of not really allow them to do it, so we have to kind of work on that out. How is a single-family house allowed to put a pool in on their private property? This also kind of gets into the whole street tree thing, how this bylaw relates to the subdivision rules and regulations and stormwater management, stormwater bylaw. It's not actually, it's not the stormwater management bylaw, it's the stormwater bylaw. The stormwater bylaw that I saw only mentions one thing. It says you have to submit a plan for your project and show trees that are 12 inches or more, and it doesn't prohibit you from cutting them down, it just shows where are they now and which ones are going to come out. It doesn't make you replace them, not the stormwater bylaw. This vegetation bylaw might make you replace some. And some of the wording that's proposed, the amendments, do have to be changed before we can move forward with this. For example, it's already been noted that the current proposal is to say, instead of having a, replacing them with trees with two and a half inch diameter, 12 feet tall, it says two and a half, 30 feet tall. You can't buy a 30-foot tall tree. Neither can you, you can't transport it, you can't plant it, you can't buy it. I think the intention is to plant some trees that will be 30 feet tall at maturity, so we need to come up with wording for that, to make that work. And I know a couple of months ago, this board was talking about generating a list of preferred trees for a developer, whether it's a commercial developer or someone who's doing a subdivision. I think it's a great idea we should all work with. And for the people at home, just so they know, if a commercial developer or a subdivider comes in here, but more so a commercial developer, and they do site plan review, the board's well aware, one of the pages that they have to submit is the landscaping plan, which lists every type of tree and bush they plan to plant and where they plan to plant them. And this board has had communications and discussions with developers and engineers saying, "Don't plant that tree, we don't want that, change the tree, change the species, change the location." So that already does happen, the town already has a lot of say in it in that regard. So again, I'm not opposed to this whatsoever, but I did have questions. One, why are we referring to stormwater bylaw when there really isn't any provision of the stormwater bylaw that affects this directly? I think that language is superfluous and should just be stricken. One, I'm just curious, the current bylaw says that we want to preserve and kind of replace trees that are five inches or more that have to be cut out. The proposal is to say six inches or more. Why? Why, I don't know if this, it relates to something else or just a number?
I think it had something to do with stormwater, I think it had something to do with that stormwater bylaw, but I may be wrong on that.
It was more that greater likelihood, you're going to have a five-inch diameter tree that's not a viable tree. Yeah, something you want to save or whatever? Yeah. Okay. I'm just curious where the number came from, because I also try to look at, when we change one bylaw, we sometimes mistakenly create conflicts with another two or three bylaws, and so I'm trying to look at how this affects X, Y, and Z down the road. But, you know, and I think the key phrase in this bylaw is the beginning of part B, where it says, "Outside the areas of actual construction activity, all trees greater than five or six inches should be preserved when or replaced." So it already says right now that we understand you have to clear part of a lot to build whatever building you're building, whether it's a commercial or a single-family house or a two-family. We're not counting those trees, because those come out by necessity. It's the other trees, we don't want you to just go down there and clear cut. There's no, we like to save as many existing trees as possible and likely require you to supplement them with some new growth. I just want that to be clear, that that phraseology stays in the bylaw because really by necessity. If I could put it another way, if you had a completely treed lot and you had to cut out half of the trees to build your house, we can't expect anyone to put back 25% of the trees because the house is now blocking, there's no area to put the 25% of the trees with the limited amount that you've put for the driveway and the house and everything. That's why that first clause is in there. So again, I support the vegetation, I support the preservation and the planting of trees. I think this board has done a lot of work in the last several years of helping or dictating what type of trees and where they should go, and I think we should continue to do that. But this might be another bylaw that we should work on and come up with something solid for the fall and, you know, have something that nobody can refuse and that everyone would support. But right now, I just think there's a lot of balls in the air with a couple of word changes that make it difficult to interpret and difficult to support. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Would you have pleasure on this?
Perhaps leave it in now and take out some words and work on it, or...
I mean, I'd prefer to try to work on it, but I don't know if people want to stay here for another hour to workshop this.
Oh, no, naturally.
I'm willing to pull it for this time with the idea that, no, in the next couple of months, this is going to come back before us during a meeting, and we're going to talk about it. Because this is now the second or third time I've tried to put this forward. Don't get any input until this hearing, but it's, people identify, no, this is a need they really should be doing. So, I mean, I'll withdraw it for now, but again, this is going to be, I'm going to ask if this will be put back on the agenda a couple of months so we can fine tune it.
Yeah, well, I mean, we've had discussions on it and everything else, but we, when it was written, it was written, wasn't ready for, to discuss at the planning board before this hearing, so... So we will pass, have a motion to take it out or to pass over it? Is that what you would like?
We'll take it out if we can.
So the same motion would go, if someone would like to make that, that it's taken out, or if not, we have a vote to pass over it at this time. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved.
And just for clarification, there is a stormwater bylaw, and there's also stormwater management rules and regulations. It's two different things.
Yeah, but it's not supposed to be. The stormwater bylaw authorizes the town to create regulations? I think it's just titled wrong, that's all.
Yeah, there's a bylaw, but it's also a set of rules and regulations.
Yes, but they should be called stormwater...The town meeting approved the stormwater bylaw. I just wanted to be consistent with everyone we know. There are stormwater management standards from DEP.
No, we have rules and regulations that were adopted either by...
In the...
I think by the Florida Select Plan. They weren't adopted...
This board adopted some regulations also.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, reference to the bylaw itself, it's the stormwater bylaw. I don't, semantics, we can talk about that later, it's details. But if I, if I may, I'd be more than happy to try to gather up some sample vegetation and tree bylaws from other towns, do that, you know, help out on that research. If the board could come up with desired list of trees or preferred trees, that'd be great.
I'm not quite sure that the desired list of trees is a smart way to go, I think...
It's just native to the region.
Please?
Just native to the region.
Yeah, I think native to the region is one way of putting it. That gets a little bit technical in some cases, but...
Correct.
But basically, that it's approved by the planning board. So that if, you know, Bradford trees were, I mean, they were the greatest thing on, it was, it was much cheaper, it grows faster.
The perfect street tree.
And you can buy them, and quite frankly, they look great by the T station. They look fantastic. I mean, people stopped by and took pictures of them, and then now, all of a sudden, it's total disaster.
And they get the little spines, it's not sticking out.
Well, that's, some of them do, and that's where they're coming up from the root stock because they've been grafted, so, but I mean, they'll cut, they'll cut you apart, but that's another...
I'm happy to work with you, and I think related to that is, we had previously had discussions a few months ago about revising the street trees to have little options to more of a natural New England type of, you know, things like that.
And there's, there's a lot of controversy right now of saying that if you make a home, you can go to certain areas and they're all sugar maples, or they're all oak trees, or they're all, and in reality, I mean, it sort of looks nice, but on the other hand, if something attacks the oaks, or something attacks the hashes, or something attacks the crab apples...
You lose them all.
You lose the whole project, the whole development.
Right.
So there's arguments about having every tree look the same.
Whether you're on the board or not, we will look for your guidance.
Thanks.
I'm also going to look at the Massachusetts List Service and bring this up on that, and you know, get a sense of what the planning community in Massachusetts says about this subject, because I'm sure a lot of other towns, communities have, you know, bylaws that we can consult.
All right. Seven, amend 175241 by replacing registered marijuana dispensaries with medical marijuana treatment center and by replacing the acronym RMD with the acronym MMTC.
I think this came up maybe in the Attorney General's approval last year as something, just a housekeeping item we should clean up in our bylaw.
Is there any such thing as a medical dispensary anymore? I mean, I thought that was just the, the language they threw out there when they...
No, they're still medical dispensary, so that's, that's, they want our language to be the same as the state's language.
Yeah. Any comments from the public? On that motion, does someone want to make a motion on it?
Motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Amend 17524-3 marijuana overlay district by creating a separate marijuana overlay district for production and cultivation use only in the MUPDD called the Marijuana Protection, Production and Cultivation District.
Okay, before we get into this, I just want everybody to know the draft you have this evening. Attorney Riley provided some edits to the initial draft, and then I sent that to Town Council along with everything else, so nobody was duplicating efforts. So that was what she meant in her email, that she added her edits on top of Attorney Riley's edits.
What? Number what? I mean, I didn't see that.
That's the first one.
Oh, the very, oh, we're back, back to the first one, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Following the numbers.
Any comments on this bylaw?
What was the email I saw? Some, is there a group looking to make that Protected Woods or something out there?
Oh, we'll get into that.
So, yes, this will affect the existing approved industrial park that's up on Chestnut Street. And what this will allow, it will allow us to allow other businesses, actually more profitable, profitable businesses for the town by allowing marijuana cultivation and manufacturing only, no dispensaries in that area. So like I said, the industrial park is already approved, they've started building, I don't know how many buildings are up there. manufacturing only, no dispensaries in that area. So like I said, the industrial park is already approved, they've started building, I don't know how many buildings are up there. And it's my understanding that Mr. Fiore has a potential tenant to go in there for cultivation and manufacturing, which in my opinion is going to bring much more money to the town than a bunch of plumbers renting garages up there and a lot less traffic. This isn't, I'm not sure there's any more land up there to develop, first of all, because you have the Buddhist temple, the pond, and then the land that the Selectmen just asked the Conservation Commission to make conservation land, which they did. Beyond Mr. Fiore's property is all landlocked, so it's not that there's, this isn't to put another industrial park or anything like that in there. This is to allow cannabis in that industrial park, which I think is a good thing for the town. Once we get these cannabis facilities up and running, we're going to see significant revenue, much more so than if we have a bunch of plumbers or electricians or whatever up there.
No offense to plumbers or electricians.
No, no offense whatsoever, but they can't produce the money that cannabis can.
So this won't, you know, the town-owned land won't be affected by this?
Oh, absolutely not, no. We've already designated that conservation.
I think that's the, when they were here, is people concerned about the town.
Absolutely not. The Selectmen approved that, and then I believe Conservation and Open Space approved it the following night.
Does Mr. Fiore's property extend to the water tower, basically, the water stanchion? No?
No, I don't think it goes that far.
Okay.
I think the property, if you're looking at Mr. Fiore, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think the property to the left is all landlocked, and 500 Chestnut Street owns a strip down Chestnut Street, so, you know, the apartments at 500 Chestnut. So it's landlocked, there's, I don't see another industrial park going in there. Like I said, this is so we can maximize our revenue from that property with very little impact.
How would you argue that that's not spot zoning?
It's an overlay district.
I'll let Mr. Riley address that, if you...
Okay, so now I'm wearing three hats. I represented Mr. Fiore, who's here tonight, who owns some land on the north side of Chestnut Street. I just want to clarify what Mr. Bezanson just said. Although it will benefit that parcel specifically, and I think he's mentioning that one because it's the only one that's currently under development, but this Marijuana Cultivation Production Bylaw would affect the existing Muppet District, we call it, the Multiple Use Plan Development District, which is essentially everything on the north side of Chestnut Street. So already as it is, all the land on the north, everything on the south side is, most of it is the state park, and there is some residential housing towards Hancock Street, everything on the north side is private property, it's not state park. Some of it was Parakeet land owned by the town, some of it is that other, I don't know how many acres it is, 10 acres maybe?
Zero.
How many acres is it? It is a parcel land the town owns near the high tension wires. That's already in the Muppet District, and the Muppet District allows multiple planned use development. It allows commercial development up there, and there hasn't been a lot because it's so far out there and there wasn't a lot of, wasn't water and sewer available out there because of all the rock. So one of the goals, I believe, after reading your, the advertisement, was to allow for cultivation and production only up there because we want to minimize uses up there that would generate traffic. We don't want a lot of traffic heading towards Hancock Street, and we don't want a lot of traffic heading towards North Quincy Street. So the Muppet District already has those type of restrictions that allows only low-impact businesses. That's also what this overlay district, I believe, is intended to do. Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm reading it and I tried to edit it, I have suggested edits that if this is going to be approved, I think it should be cleaned up and clarified a bit. So it doesn't affect just Mr. Fiore's land, he just happens to be one guy that's out there building right now. It does affect the entire area of that Muppet District that already exists.
Could affect the lobster barn, it could affect the corner store, it could affect any of those residential homes.
Everything to the west of Hancock Street and the north of Chestnut Street.
There's a big chunk of land still.
So I mean, that's why it's not spot zoning, it's because there's...
Correct.
Well, that's what I wanted.
A mile worth of frontage that this applies to.
Right.
That's Rick, and Mr. Riley, that's just what I wanted, an explanation, the people at home that are planners, and they might hear that, they might think that it's just benefiting that one industrial park, and in that case it would be. But in fact, it's an overlay district too, in case that...
So I submitted, I went through that whole bylaw, and the reason I got involved again is because I speak zoning. And as you know, I also represented a marijuana retail store on Route 18, so I'm familiar with the CMI regulations. So I think, I kind of had some insight that I hoped I could clean up and improve this bylaw if the town approves it. So as moderator, I want to have something on the table that is well-written, that if it approves it, it should be well-written and work right. And if the town doesn't approve it, then that's the town's decision. So I submitted a bunch of edits to clean it up, sent it into Liz, Liz sent it to Town Council, and then Town Council eventually added a couple of other comments. What I just handed to you is a draft that incorporates all of my edits, and then I put notes in the margin where I just, I just got a copy of the Town Council's latest edits. And so I hand-wrote them in while you guys were doing things earlier to show where things have been suggested by Town Council. But essentially, the purpose is to allow cultivation, production, and the growth of cannabis, usually it's in a warehouse. You cannot have a retail store up in this area because that generates traffic. Warehouses don't generate a lot of traffic.
No, we don't, we don't want to have another, we've got an area in town for retail, and we don't need more than one area.
Right.
I'm sure a lot of people would object to that.
Right, the retail stores are limited to only essentially Route 18 and parts of Adam Street, north of Sorrel's, and easy, and that's not changing. But there'll be no retail stores allowed under this new bylaw on Chestnut Street or Hancock Street. The Marijuana Production and Cultivation Overlay District, or the MP Cod or MPCOD or whatever we want to call it, is basically being set up much like the retail one, but we're doing it in Chestnut with limited uses. It lists some of the definitions that are used in the bylaw, the definitions are taken right from the state regulations. We just put it in the bylaw so you don't have to look at both of them at the same time. It also doesn't allow delivery drivers to pick up a carload or a couple of retail orders from Chestnut Street and drive around town because we're trying to limit traffic. It is for people who grow and then would deliver it to retail stores or to other marijuana establishments, not to houses and not having customers come in every day at all. The location and dimensional control, oh, first of all, there was, in the proposal, there was a section about the limiting the number of licenses. In Abington, we limit the number of retail store licenses to five, I believe it is, right?
Yes, 20 percent.
Town Council said that we need to delete that section from the cultivation bylaw, which this is, because the state doesn't allow you to, it only allows you to limit the number of retail stores, it doesn't allow you to limit the number of cultivation. Typically cultivation sites are larger operations because it's an expensive building, it's an expensive ventilation system, you don't have a bunch of small cultivation companies, it's usually something that's on bigger land, bigger, not huge, you don't need 20 acres, but it's usually bigger. So there isn't going to be 30 cultivation companies up on Chestnut Street. The, let's see, one of the things I suggested, again, I was taking things out of the state law, that a cultivation product entrance can't be more than 500 feet, can't be less than 500 feet from a school entrance. All of this land is not within 500 feet of a school, so it complies, but I put it in there anyhow in case having to build a school in the future that's up in that area. It has to be in a permanent building. Again, this is all out there. The tract of land, we had proposed that it be in single ownership, but the time of site development of building and structure should be at least five acres with a minimum of 75 feet, parking will be in the front side or rear, but no closer than 50 feet to any to the street. Unless explicitly stated otherwise, these businesses would conform to all of the existing dimensional requirements that the Muppet District has, so the Muppet already has certain setbacks. Town Council made a note saying that she questioned basically the five-acre minimum, the 75-foot frontage minimum, because she said, "Are there properties up there that can satisfy that?" Because if there aren't, you're shooting yourself in the foot here. We have to have something in this bylaw to set a minimum for these type of businesses because if you don't, the Muppet bylaw then controls, and the Muppet bylaw says you have to have a 10-acre parcel and 200 feet of frontage. And none of those really exist. Mr. Bezanson was talking about how things are set up right now, they don't exist. Can I just probably pull? Yeah, I was right here on this one. So the tract of land, I would, maybe it's defined differently. I'm assuming that, or maybe I shouldn't assume, that if there's a facility that goes up there, it's going to be in a, well, it's going to be in a building, but maybe it'll take up the entire building or be part of a building. But is there a way to read this that says that that building has to have these five acres around it versus just, it can be in a 100,000-square-foot warehouse that's part of a larger five-acre development? Oh, okay. I think the building has to be on a, I think, I would suggest a two-acre minimum, has to be on at least a two-acre parcel. If it's a five-acre or 10-acre parcel, and let's say it's part of a, what's the phrase with your building up there, a park, you know, multiple buildings? Yeah, you could do that, you could have a cultivation business and then you could have a sheet rock warehouse up there, but the cultivation business can't be there unless it's a two-acre parcel or more. Yeah, I guess that's what, make sure that we're not saying that there has to be five acres or two acres assigned to each facility. Nope, it doesn't say that. That you can have multiple non-related uses on this tract as well, in addition to. It doesn't, correct, it doesn't prohibit that, it would allow that. And the underlying Muppet District actually encourages that, multiple uses, low-impact uses on that. In reality, my assumption would be, just knowing the industry, a company that came in to build a cultivation or processing plant would probably use, you know, want to control the whole property. But Rick, you are correct, it could be part of a larger development. There's nothing here to prevent that, but there's nothing here that requires it either. So that section D5, I would suggest the board consider that perhaps it should say five acres and 75 feet, I'm sorry, two acres and 75 feet instead of five acres based on Town Council's advice.
So two acres?
Yeah, she didn't mention a specific acreage, she just said, you know, is this, you know, too big, you know, too large a minimum.
Is this number five?
This is, yeah.
Oh, all right, I'm looking at hers, sorry.
D5, for the board to, for the board to take a vote and decide. This current draft reads five acres, so you'd have to amend it to say two before you make a final vote. Town Council had suggested that we delete the last language that was included in Part Six, that the planning board could impose additional restrictions on signage as appropriate. She said that she thought that was too vague, you should just stick to your sign by law. So that's why it's crossed out, because she recommended that. Then it goes into special permit, what's required with the application, it pretty much follows what the retail marijuana applications, very detailed application, site plan, security plans, landscaping, traffic flows, all of that would be part of the application, it goes in front of the, the planning board for both site plan review and for the special permit. And a couple of places through here, she took out the word "planning board" and just put in the abbreviation SPGA, which is Special Permit Granting Authority. She, there's a section E, E1B, that talks about when an application is filed, Liz would essentially distribute it to the other departments, the Building Department, Fire and Fire, Police Department, Water, Health, GONCOM. And then she suggested that the SPGA, the planning board, will not act, shall not act on the special permit until either the comments from referred boards or agencies are received or 35 days have elapsed. So it gives the other boards 35 days to put some comments in front of the planning board before you take a vote to approve or deny the application.
That can be problematic, though.
Why?
Because we get an application and usually they're meeting on it within a month.
Right.
Within 30 days, not 35 days.
So in this case, the applicant should, and I've had to do this with you before, is say, "Don't put me on the next agenda because we need to let the 35 days pass." Or you can open up the hearing, but you just can't vote the first night of the hearing because you have to wait the 35 days to let the other boards, make sure the other boards had time to meet and issue any comments. You can do it either way.
How about 28 days?
I had drafted 30, Town Council put in 35, but, so it's just to make sure that all the boards have input and that no one's rushing into this.
Okay.
There is similar language in other parts of the Avenue of Zoning bylaw with that requirement also. You'll see, SPGA was put in there, she put in a language, corrected some language in Part E, subsection E, marijuana facilities may not operate unless the applicant has a valid host community agreement with the town relative to any facility. Much like retail use, the applicant has to go meet with the town manager, board of selectmen, get a host community agreement, that's how the town gets to collect the tax revenue, it's all in that agreement, the Selectmen handle that part of it, and then, so the applicant has to get that host community agreement signed off, they have to come to the planning board for site plan review, the planning board for a special permit. Meanwhile, they're going through a boatload of regulation and regulatory review and inspections from the state's Cannabis Control Commission. All of that, if they don't get one of those, they're out of the game. They have to get all those things, and it does take several months for them to go through that. If property is transferred, that special permit can be transferred to the new owner by a vote of the planning board at a public meeting, according to Town Council's suggested language. The permit lapses, the special permit lapses if the property owner or the business owner loses their state license or the host community agreement expires. Usually they're good for five years, there's a little bit of thought about change in the whole host community law and how those are written and extended, that remains to be seen. We included language in here specifically that says, "No delivery, no retail, and also no onsite consumption." Workers can't sample stuff in the parking lot, much like anywhere else, but we put it in there anyhow, so it's clear as a bell. And there's also language in here about nuisances, that no use allowed in this overlay district can create a nuisance to in a butter that creates any sort of hazard, fire, explosion, gas, smoke, dust, vapors, which again is language that we use in other sections of our zoning bylaw. No business can do that really, but we put it in here so that an applicant reads this before they even apply. And based on all that, with some of the edits I suggested and what the Town Council reviewed approved, and then also her edits, it's there for you, I think the only decision you have to make is the minimum number of acreage, and then the town has to decide if they'd like to enact this or not. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Did you still want to, can you moderate a hat? Did you want to still combine this and amend the map at the same time within this article?
Yeah, there's a separate item on your agenda, which is to amend the map to include this overlay, basically color in the area where this is, which is the same district where the Muppet District is, north of Chestnut Street. And I say that because there's another Muppet District over near the airbase that is not affected by this whatsoever. This overlay district is only on the Chestnut Street area. So there's two things, this bylaw has to be approved to allow the use, and then we have to also take a vote to change the map to add the coloring. You could add the, and change the map at the end of this warrant article, right now you have two separate articles, doesn't matter to me, but I would just suggest that we ask the Selectmen to put the map amendment after this because there's no sense amending the map unless this one passes first. Follow me?
So we're going to leave well enough on, then I just make sure the warrant has...
I think it's...
One should follow the other one, if we can get them, because presently it's different, you know, there's other things to take up in the middle in between.
So that's my summary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your summary. I just want to reiterate what Sean said, the five-acre part just doesn't make The five-acre part just doesn't make sense. We are shooting ourselves in the foot with that. I mean, if someone wants to put up a 50,000 square foot building, you know, they're not going to do it here because of the five acre. I mean, I think two acre is probably reasonable.
Yeah, if they want to buy more, they can.
Right. But I don't think we should require five acres, especially in that zone.
Could I ask a question? Presently, the amount of land that's cleared up there in Mr. Piori's area, is there any more land that will be cleared?
Couple of small portions in the northeast corner. So all the work that we're doing up there, within the women's work, that was approved by the manhood. There were some that we couldn't access because of big drop-offs with the ledge. So we leveled that off down we get to it. So there's a small triangle in the northeast corner that needs to be cleared. And along the right side of the, on the east side, there would be roads going up around. In order for us to make the three-one slope there, we have to take out some more trees. Right now, it's a two-one slope. But it was approved for a three-one slope. They take some more trees, put some more gravel in there.
Do you know whether there are any cedars in that particular area, either of those areas? Mr. Barland?
My name's Dan Broman. I live at 222 Linwood Street. I'm a registered voter and a taxpayer in Abington. I have, oh, yes. Here's the copy of the zoning map that you produced for me. And up here is this, the area that we're talking about, this area here. And this is where the proposed, and the reason I'm here is because of the proposed zoning changes for two marijuana overlay districts. The one I'm concerned with are wetlands, forest, and Atlantic white cedar. On the Mass Wildlife's Natural Heritage and Endangered Species website, BioMap 2, you see the green area here? This is what we're talking about. That green area is core habitat. It's marked 1228 because it's home to the Hassel hair streak butterfly, the New England blew it, and the spotted turtle. Three species of conservation concern. And in the case of the Hassel hair streak, a species of special concern, the Atlantic white cedar is the only place it breeds. I've got Map 3 here. This is a private parcel. This is from Google Maps. Anybody can look at this on Google Maps. You can zero down into it and you can see what's going, what went on there. It's a clear cut, a piece of wetland left in the middle. You can see the wetlands in the middle there. And there's a white cedar swamp downhill from there, on the right. Okay, now I have BioMap number four. And you can see that this BioMap, BioMap 2 map is superimposed over Google Maps. And you can see here that the area we're talking about is in that core habitat, area of special conservation concern by the State Mass Wildlife and Endangered Species Heritage Program. What I'm hoping to accomplish with this presentation that I'm giving here right now is to avoid creating a marijuana overlay district in this area, in this highly sensitive, ecologically important area in Abington. In my opinion, the marijuana retail overlay district, which is the second part of this rezoning proposal, would be a better place. In East Bridgewater, one facility combines both retail and production in the same building. Protection of this area is critical to me and it should be critical to every Abington resident because our environment's in big trouble. We all know that. We see it every day. You were talking about trees. There's a book called Finding the Mother Tree by Suzanne Simard. And she talks about how our forests are dying. And the reason they're dying is because of this kind of stuff. So I am asking you, our conservation commission voted to conserve Zero Chestnut, as Selectman Zanson said. But we don't know if that's going to be put into conservation. There's so many different ways you can do it. If it's in the selectmen's office, they can take it off conservation. It can go through the state. And if it goes through the state, then we can't touch it. And that's the kind of conservation we really need for the future generations, for your kids. I don't have any kids, so why should I care? Well, because this planet is in trouble and we need to preserve it. We need to take care of this. So areas like this, where the state of Massachusetts is saying, "This is, this is habitat that we can't replace", this is, this is a very important place. I just have to have my say. I hope that people understand what we're up against. It's 2022.
I just want to say I agree with almost everything that Mr. Brillman just said. I just want people at home to understand and be clear that creating an overlay district does not negate wetlands protection bylaws, does not negate species protection bylaws. I'm very familiar with this area of town because I was on the middle school site selection committee years ago. We looked at putting a school up there. And one of the reasons we didn't go up there is because there was so much wetlands. It was a pond and there was protected species up there. So just because we create a zoning district doesn't mean that every square foot of it is developable. It's not. And those protections that exist now will continue. This does not change any of those protections, which is a good thing. One of the things that this board, the idea of this, again, both the underlining zoning district, the Muppet District, and this overlay district was to try to have minimal impacts, create some investment because it's going to get developed somehow. What we don't want to have is multifamily housing up there. Takes a while for the fire department to get up there. You need to extend your water and sewer up there. Even though there's water tanks up there, the pipes don't go all the way down the street or all the way down Chestnut Street. But by minimum, using, uses with low impact, you have lower pollution, you have lower traffic, you have lower noise, all that stuff. So that has been part of this whole equation. And as I mentioned before, the town, I think, and the state has done a good job of trying to preserve land, especially up in that northwest corner of Abington, where we have the existing Ames and Noel State Park. We have the Parke farm. And now we've just added another large parcel that is protected land. Not to mention the pond, which you can't build on. And there's a large swath that goes right through there where the high tension wires are. That's owned by Edison. You're not going to build on that area either. So there's a lot of land up there right now that can't be touched. And there's some that won't be touched. So I don't think that this proposal, I'm not trying to argue for it because I am just one voter, but I want people to understand at home this doesn't negate any of the protections that already exist.
Any other public comment? Board members? Want to put this forward? Want to make a motion to put it forward?
Sure.
Do you want to amend?
With the amendments that-
To two acres?
Yeah, I would say so. I don't understand why it's five acres. So a motion to have this article on the warrant with the changes that have been proposed and to be two acres rather than five acres. Motion made?
Second.
And seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. And then amend the zoning map to include the proposed marijuana overlay district for production and cultivation. Any comments from the public? So according to what we have, a motion to be in order-
As amended by Town Council.
As amended by Town Council for the overlay district. Motion?
Motion.
Motion made?
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Someone? All right. What else we got? Nothing further come before the meeting?
I don't know if you have to adjourn, if it's all right. The Roseland Street bylaws rolled in. Those need to be signed before we leave.
Oh, yeah.
So they're all set and ready for you to go.
Okay. A motion to adjourn to be in order.
Any announcements from the chair? Any announcements from the chair?
No. All those in favor, say aye.
Are you going to be here? Are you going to be here on the fourth?
I don't know. I, if, there's a question whether I'll be here on the fourth before I did adjourn the meeting, but on the fourth, but, so I might not be here on the fourth of April. I'm coming in on a plane, so I just don't know when it, but hopefully I'll be here. But if you want to postpone it, you can. Otherwise, pull it for the fourth. That was, that's why you brought that up.
Yeah. Do you guys want to have a meeting on the fourth or do you want to? Okay.
Out of there. We can change it if you want.
I'm up for it.
You can change it.
Please.
I think it seems to be-
Change it. Let's change it.
You want to change it?
You want to change it?
I'll change it. That's what you want to do.
All right. The 11th?
I mean, we could have it the 11th or we could have it the 5th, either, whatever. Is that what you want, the 11th?
Doesn't matter to me.
Will you guys postpone the meeting on the night of town meeting? If something happens on?
Yeah.
Or you'll have nothing on the-
Not my first town meeting.
So we'll postpone it the fourth to the 11th then? Is that what everybody agrees with?
Um, no, they're going to have to meet on the fourth because they continued stuff to the fourth, right?
Yeah, we have, well, we have one-
Seven-Fat Dale could continue to the fourth and his thing would expire.
He had it to the eighth.
Right.
So do you want to make it Tuesday, the fifth? Tuesday, the fifth? Is that okay with everybody?
I, I'm, all right, I think that'll be-
Planning board.
Yep. So we're not voting that?
Right. And that, and they extended that-
So he'll be okay for that. I'll just let him know.
Glad you could like, mend it with that. I think we adjourned the meeting.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah. 4/20, whatever it was.